Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Beverly H. Burks and this is our joint meeting with the City Council and Downtown Development Authority Agenda. At this time, I will do roll call of the council, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
President.
Councilwoman Bell. I think she's...
Is she on Zoom yet?
Was she on Zoom?
She was gonna be on Zoom.
Okay.
She said someone should let her in, is what she has texted me.
She said let her in?
Yeah.
Okay, so if someone with the Zoom can let her in, Councilman Carroll. You're here, right?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Council, Councilman Perkins.
Sure.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
Councilwoman Adie.
Present.
And our city manager, Shaquilla Miller Thornton, with the Downtown Development Authority, it would be me. And to talk and present to us will be the Chair, Dr. Johnny Garcia. And so at this time, we will move to new business, and that is for A, to discuss the Downtown Development Authority's mission and vision statement. And Dr. Garcia, we have you down for A, B, C, D. So you can come on up, and I think Mr. Edwards is gonna pass you a copy if he hasn't already.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm happy to be here. So, things are going great for the DDA. Let's start with that. I like the idea that movement of any kind of movement being a chiropractor is good for the body. So, same with the DDA, I think. Some movement from the DDA is good for the DDA, and also good for our great city of Clarkston. We do have the logo that we've been working on, trying to come up with some branding for the DDA.
So, let's do this. Because A is the mission and vision.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And if you look up on the screen, look in front of you.
Where am I?
Right there.
All right. I'm so excited about the logos. All right, so we have our strategic vision in Clarkston. So we've been working with Georgia Tech. And to develop the mission, vision for the DDA, we do have our draft statements, and hopefully you've all had a chance to see those. We definitely want to make sure that what the DDA is doing is on purpose, in alignment with the goals and the heart of the city. So, that is something that we have to discuss with you all, and we welcome your feedback on those items. If you already have that feedback, of course, we can, we'd love to take that as well.
Okay, I think whoever is drawing the slides, can you move it to show? Okay.
Can you go to page seventeen?
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
As we get to the page, he needs to be on. Mr. Bowie and Mr. Edwards and I have talked briefly about the potential for the council and the DDA to get together in a retreat session.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so, we would want to start to talk around scheduling that.
Okay. Okay, and as we're moving, council, is that something that we are all willing to do in terms of a joint session with the DDA?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Can we clear, so what we're saying, like a strategic planning?
Yes. Yes.
Specifically with the DDA. Okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you all will want to...
Yes.
The other question I have is, do we have an electronic copy of this working vision? Because I didn't see it in the agenda. Could you just send to the council?
Yeah.
We apologize. We thought that you uploaded the attachment, that it would update your package, but you gotta delete and re-upload everything again, so that's our fault.
It's kind of okay.
Okay. So as we're doing it, Dr. Garcia, I see what the working vision is, and you can look and straight, should be straight in front of you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So this is the working vision statement, and for the benefit of everybody that's participatory in the meeting, I'll go ahead and just read it for us. It's also an eye exam for me today. "Clarkston: Where Global Cultures Build Local Success." And this was kind of the title that we came up with for our vision statement. And to break that down, "To build a vibrant, inclusive city where diverse businesses thrive through inclusive development, cultural celebration, and sustainable investment." Our working mission statement is, this, uh, where is it? "The Clarkston DDA is dedicated to building a vibrant, connected downtown by celebrating the city's cultural fabric through dynamic experiences, enhanced public spaces, and promoting partnerships, civic engagement, and regional collaboration." And just to mention, I probably should have started with this, but these two items, the vision statement, mission statement, came out of, was born from our work sessions that we have, a couple of work sessions, where we were talking, really trying to delve into the fabric of Clarkston, past, present, and then also envisioning for the future. And in those sessions, that's how we came up with those two statements.
Are there any questions about this from the council? Okay. Public, do you have any questions about this? And if you don't have any, that's okay. Okay, all right, none. We'll move on to the next item, because this is for discussion purposes, and we're not moving or doing anything in terms of approving anything with these items. We can go to B, which is to discuss the Passport to Clarkston Project.
Yeah, so really excited about this one. The Passport to Clarkston was an idea of a first kind of project for the DDA to help engage with all of the different businesses and also all the residents and visitors of the city. Basically, it's a coupon book, and if you remember these types of things from the past, you get a coupon book and you can go to the different businesses, enjoy a little discount or something. And then at the same time, that's something that we could help the DDA to raise funds also, if we monetize the book in a way. We want the book to be accessible to everyone as far as receiving those coupons, so the book to the people, right now in our mind, it's gonna be completely free for the people to receive the book, to receive the discounts and the various coupons. And that we would charge small fees to the people that are putting the advertisements into the book, or the businesses that put it into the book. But again, very accessible types of fees is what's on our mind. We're talking twenty-five dollars, or fifty dollars, or things like that, like low numbers, to just make it so it's super accessible. And it's gonna be a digital book, which is great too, because we don't have to worry about expensive printing and, you know, stocking, and then how do you refresh it if you have a new person? Oh, I didn't hear about the book, but now I want to get into the book. So it's gonna be something really easy that we can share, not hard to update when we need to update, whether we're adding or subtracting businesses. And then of course, to disseminate it to people would be very easy too, because it's digital. We could possibly email it to them, or text message it to them, or they could scan a code, so it should be very, very cool.
Any questions about that? Yes. And then Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Bill, do you want to go first? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Johnson, do you want to go first?
Okay. Will these books be accessible throughout the city, like in little bins or at the outside?
Will the books, passports be locally accessible if I'm a walker and not electronic?
So, that's a good thing to ask as far as accessibility. The way we envision distributing it is through the businesses that are participating. So, for example, if we have the local diner, right, and so they may have a coupon there, and they would help us to distribute these books to all their patrons as they're coming in, say, hey, here's a book. And so it would catch not only the residents of the city, but the visitors of the city too.
Got it.
And it's kind of new stuff for me, to be honest with you, as far as how to do, I'm used to the old book where you got the big fat book, and it was like full of all the coupons. I forgot what it was called, but I used to have that. This is gonna be something digital, we can have a QR code to access it. It could be a link off the website. It could be this. I mean, there's just so many variables of how we can do this and distribute it.
So, I guess I have a question. So, I guess my understanding of the mission of the DDA is basically as a land development agency. That the city, for various reasons, can't purchase and develop land itself. The DDA is a mechanism for the city to do that. So my question is kind of, do you see that as your primary mission? Because it seems to me like the coupon book, while that may be a worthy goal, is not really the primary mission. Primary mission should be finding parcels of land, making proposals to the city government, we think it should be developed this way, and then the city council can say yes or no to funding that proposition. So I guess, to me, it kind of seems like logo, branding, coupon, all those are kind of distractions, or, you know, to the primary mission. So I guess that's kind of, my question is, do you see your primary mission that way, or do you see it as something different?
I'm glad that you say that, Councilman Carroll, because as I drove over here today, one of the things that I did want to say, and give me the opportunity to say it now, is that the DDA is not just the entertainment wing of the city, to plan events and do passport books and things like that. The true function of the DDA is, just as you pointed out, is to work on the land development, and also those various powers that the DDA has to help really propel the DDA. But, everything that we're doing right now, because we're brand new, is like, it's almost like a chicken and an egg. We want people to know about the DDA and become engaged, but we don't have a brand. We don't have, you know, we don't have certain things to help us to promote it, and this is just gonna help serve that purpose. So we have a lot of moving parts that are happening all at the same time, developing the mission, developing the vision, this passport project. And also that engaging the council on these other issues as far as the land, you know, what parcels are available now? Where do we have to strategically start thinking about, you know, using the leverages that the DDA brings to the city? And so, yeah, so it's really a lot of moving parts, and the DDA for sure knows about those other parts that you mentioned.
Okay, because I guess I don't really understand, like how, for example, the passport furthers the underlying land mission. Because it seems like you would go to a link, you would maybe go to the council and say, hey, these are three parcels we're looking at, these are the prices that landowners have offered to us, you know, is this, and these are possible ways we could develop them, or these three, which of those options would the council be interested in, if any? And it doesn't seem to me like people knowing about the DDA or the coupon book really furthers that mission, because just general consumer awareness, the DDA, I don't see how that leads to the land development. But maybe I'm missing a step there or not understanding something.
Well, I hear what you're saying. I think some, like A to B to C, but this, developing the DDA and the city and the relationship, you have to have the city's support. And that requires us to have the support of all the people too. And we want to make sure that we're not only focused on these broader goals, but also have smaller goals intertwined into the bigger picture.
So, I see the city manager wants to make a point, and I'll follow up after that.
I was just going to say that downtown development is pretty much economic development focused, right, which is holistic. It's not just land development, but it's about commercial and business development, commercial and business retention, anything that kind of feeds into the sustainability and growth of our development area, right? So I can see where a new DDA would need to, you know, become known, right, within the area. What is the DDA? And that's what that brand, and that's what getting into the business corridor and having like this coupon book that's going to help to promote, you know, them in the area. I think a lot of, a lot of the buzz around downtown development and economic development is really, I think, relayed from business to business, from business to developer, right? So if the businesses know, businesses and developers, they talk, right? So if the businesses know, then the developers know, and then we get the word out about the DDA. And I think, I think they're, I think you all are taking the right approach. I think high-level and broader scope level land development will come, and it is coming. I know that you all are already thinking about what some of these properties can, yes, no, yeah? What, how some of the properties that the city owned, city-owned, and some of the private-owned properties, how they can be used. So, I was just trying to connect, right?
Right.
Not just downtown development and development of land approach, but a holistic economic development approach.
Yeah, I have two questions, to you, Madam Mayor. So the first, so you've kind of mentioned this idea of like attracting developers to the branding. And I see kind of the connection between those things. What are y'all doing to proactively reach out or identify developers that you think would be good partners for the kind of community that we are?
So as of right now, again, it's a chicken and an egg scenario. The DDA has no property. We have nothing to really talk about. We have a lot of hypotheticals. And people are busy, you know, and they're not necessarily wanting to talk hypotheticals. And I think, if you ask me, I think that the sooner the city is able to help the DDA by... Help the DDA to have various parcels or properties, then we have something to start talking about. And then also, I'll just mention, while we're out in the community and we are doing these different things, even the passport book, once it comes to fruition, it opens up the dialogue with those businesses and with those owners of those properties, who may, in those moments, not really think that they want to sell their business or sell their property, but because we're doing something, they might. And for about 30 seconds, I did have the ear of one of the owners of one of the major key properties. But again, it's such, you know, when they're ready to talk about selling property, are we ready to acquire it? And right now, the DDA cannot acquire anything. We have the funds that the city provided for us to start up, but we have no buying power. We're a new entity, so we can't just, you know, we need to have some type of collateral or something. We have to have something to be able to make any kind of land acquisition movement. And so it is a little bit of a circle. And that's why it's so important we work together, city and DDA, and community altogether.
And Councilwoman Perkins, to that point, the other piece is that we'd also talked about having an open house with the developers so that they could turn around and see what opportunities we had as far as land. So that it's not necessarily us purchasing the land, but providing them what parcels we have available, the opportunities, and letting them know what tools that we as a DDA have available for them to utilize as well.
And I just want to comment on that. I think, I think y'all can do open houses too. But to your point, Madam Mayor, of, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be something that comes out of the DDA. One of the things that you can do, especially with some of our blighted or problematic properties, is build relationships with developers that have a good track record, and just see if they would be interested in being, you know, saying, hey, would we, can we say you might be interested in this? And be a little bit of a matchmaker between folks that you know have a more holistic understanding of development, you know, keep the community in mind, and may have the resources to go ahead and move forward with the project. There's a number of people out there. So that's really what I was getting at with my question, is how are y'all kind of triaging through and saying, hey, you know what, you know, have you, some of this is a little bit like a, you know, a dating game? You know, it's like, all right, you know, okay, who are we going to give a rose to as a city? Obviously, there's some things that we can just kind of only incentivize and hope for the best. We don't have a lot of control. But I think there's a lot that y'all can do, even with limited resources, to begin building those relationships, getting those fund numbers, and, you know, bringing those people in. I know that, because I've done it, you know, there's been a couple of people that I brought in who I knew had a good history of working in, you know, places. And I said, hey, can I just give you a tour? And just, can I pass your business card along if something comes up? You know, because we, you know, we have issues in certain areas, and if, you know, push comes to sub, can I make connections? And, you know, and that's been something that people have been willing to do. So my second question, you can, I'm going to ask my second question if you have any additional comments on that. Obviously, feel free to jump in. So my second question is around the coupon book for businesses. How do y'all plan on evaluating the effectiveness of that project? So my understanding, the goal is to obviously attract more people into, you know, to kind of get to know Clarkson, understand our businesses, build some rapport and, you know, goodwill with the DDA. How are y'all evaluating the effectiveness of that program?
So I'll answer your second question first, and then maybe comment on the first one and second. With this digital coupon age, apparently, we're going to be able to, with computers, I don't know how to do it myself, but they do. They'll be able to track the usage just by having those merchants to report back that the coupon was used. And of course, the merchants are going to want to show us, you know, they're going to want to be in the book if it's effective. And if they're having people, if they're bringing people into their businesses, they're going to be happy about that, to work with us to just get that feedback. So we're going to collect it directly from the businesses. There's probably a more high-tech way to do it, and of course, they would know more about that than I did. But it's definitely something we want to do. Because one of the things for the book also that we had envisioned would be that if it is effective for your business, that you could do an extra ad during maybe your holiday that you have, or maybe during a special promotion that you have, and have the flexibility to do more. Like, we're trying to get everybody in, as, you know, as many people as we can intervene with. But if it's working for you, then you have a way that you can take it another step. And that's good too for the DDA, because it shows that, you know, the businesses are benefiting. And I have talked to some local businesses, and we have local businesses here today and in the audience as well. And one of the things that people always, to support, they want to see you doing something, you know? And that's the question. Most people think, if they don't see something happening, nothing's been done. And so this is another benefit of being in the passport book and kind of going out promoting that in a way, is to say, hey, we're here, we're new, yeah, this is something that was tried before and didn't go anywhere, but we're actually doing something. Okay, good, you're doing something to try to help our business. So we'll get more support that way. And then we'll get insider tips. They'll say, hey, you know, Joe Schmo down the street might want to, you know, sell his property. He just told me, he thought we're friends, and I like you because you're trying to help my business. So there's a relationship that the DDA has to have with the community and the businesses, and of course, the city. Now, comment first one, if you remember what it is now.
Relationships with developers.
Yes, creativity in the process. And this is something I'm going to ask every council member here, our mayors, to consider. We have to be creative. This is a very complicated thing to start up a DDA. It's not all straight step one, step two, step three. Sometimes you got to go back to step one, again, go back again. So keep that in mind. And one of the things that I had thought about even trying to engage that particular property was that the DDA can get a property under contract, can get one under contract, with terms. And some of those terms can be, hey, give us a year to work something out some other way, playing matchmaker in a way with how to get it done. And so that's something that is on my mind as well. So I'm glad that you're saying creatively, just think about matchmaking. So that, that, and also the straightaway, everything's that means.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep, and if you have those contacts, that'd be good to let Richard and DDA to know about, and then we can kind of work from there too. That'll work out good. Any other comments? Susan, Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, I don't know much about DDAs, so I'll be asking some questions that maybe it's obvious to other people. Can you market our city as a whole without actually owning property? In other words, people learn about property values and properties in the DDA area. And if they then decide that they want to acquire property for a development, but go through the DDA, because I believe you have the authority to reduce or defer property taxes and that sort of thing. So I'm trying to understand the difference between where the DDA actually owns property or where the DDA partners with a developer who is buying the property for the purpose of a new development, and then, you know, partner relative to what kind of benefits you can give to the developer to give them an incentive to put their development here versus somewhere else.
So I want to make sure we don't get too far from topic B.
Okay, let me just shorten it and say, they don't own any property. So I just want to understand what that means.
Well, I love your question, Councilwoman Hood, because it sounded very like you know a lot about DDAs. Really, in your question, you started out by saying that, maybe you didn't, I think you do. And right now, the DDA has no property. But there's going to be different ways that, you got to think of the DDA as a tool, and it could be used in different ways. One of the ways would be, yeah, the DDA has property, and that's kind of the simpler way to think of it. The other way is exactly what you said. We can just work with the existing owners and developers and kind of help to get it going and, you know, give an incentive for the development to happen. Maybe that helps the seller of the property, owner of the property. It's got to be a win-win. And most DDA engagement is always looked from that perspective, is what I'm understanding, is that it's got to be a win for the city, it's got to be a win for the people of the city, for the visitors of the city, it's got to be a win for, it's got to be something good for everybody.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on B? Public comments on B? Okay, we'll move to C, to discuss the DDA and the city of Clarkston's relationship.
I love our relationship.
Okay, okay.
Perfect timing.
Thank you for your presentation on the mission and vision, as well as the project. My question is, so I have an economic development and planning background, sit up downtown development authorities, CDIs and BIDs, BIDs rather. So my question is, have you reached out to Main Street or the Georgia Academy for Economic Development? Because they actually have a whole guide on, wait, I'm still on here. Why am I out of breath? Because they actually have a whole guide on various ways to engage the community, but also utilize the DDA as a tool for more economic development. Because a lot of that, of course, as you mentioned, is working with those business owners, but helping them actually have a business model that's effective and that also is revenue generating, is also going to help you build a relationship with them to see when somebody is about to sell. Or to say, to tell people that think about coming to the community, hey, y'all should work with the DDA instead of trying to do it independently. So have y'all done any of that thus far?
It's come up in conversations in DDA meetings to have those kind of workshops to encourage exactly what you're saying, that engagement. But I think you may have heard this part. We have a lot of moving parts all happening at the same time, and some are coming to the top faster than others. Like today, I started off talking about our logo, and now we're talking about other things. And that's okay. I think it's okay at this stage where we are as a DDA to not let it confuse or frustrate the conversation. Because at the end of the day, we're going to be aligned on one goal, and that is to make the city flourish and be that engine that we need for the city to grow and continue to grow.
I may.
Yes, go ahead.
So I think that's great, right? But I think that those two entities specifically can help you with that.
Thank you. And those two entities, Jacob might know for sure if he already had engagement or not.
Right, so, yeah, go ahead, Jacob, because I know you...
I got to defer to Jacob.
I love that question. So part of what's going on right now, having that strategic vision and mission, essentially was the initial goal of working with Georgia Tech to become, to develop a strategic plan for the development authority that would be in alignment with the city as well. Technically, they have completed phase one of this process of getting the vision and mission statement and working towards moving to part two of it. And in that part two are the details of having those more, you know, strategic conversations about what you just proposed. So we haven't worked with Main Street initially just yet. However, I am aware of the resources they do have with Georgia Tech and just how the relationship developed with Georgia Tech. Soon as I engage with them, you know, we just got the ball on those things to get it started to what it is today.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Bill, to Mr. Bowie's point, he's also provided us with opportunities in terms of the workshops and engaging with them. He's been currently going and kind of been being that liaison to us for that information as he's been gathering it. So I just want to make sure that it hasn't been neglected in terms of the DDA. We've been leveraging the staff to make sure in terms of those opportunities, and they've also let us know about potential classes for the DDA to be a part of. And Council, Vice Mayor Johnson.
So my question is for either of you. So basically, what you're telling us tonight is stick to the script, and it'll all come in phases? But basically, we're doing this, 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 and this, and then the next is around the corner. If you come back to us and we have another joint meeting, some of the things that my colleagues have addressed will be addressed during that stage of the process. So for tonight, you're telling us these are the things that you're working on, according to your phase one?
You want me to answer all that stuff? Yes, so we are working on these things, but this is not the entire, the total list of things. There's other things that we're still working on too, that just aren't here. These are the ones that I think are, it's like, again, a chicken and an egg. You know, we really do want to resolve our logo. It should, my view, it shouldn't take that long for us to pick a logo out necessarily. We've got to kind of get things, got to get things moving. And that's another reason why we put it at the top of the list. It helps us to do our Instagram or Facebook, you know, start building that brand messaging we wanted for the passport book in addition to. So it's just a lot of moving parts, and we're just trying to, you know, manage them, you know? And some of it's low-hanging fruit, you know, because you got to get some wins in there, otherwise you have people dropping off. And we do have a resignation right now too, because, you know, the DDA is working. It's a lot of work, and we have great people on the DDA, sitting on the DDA, but we have, you know, businesses and, of course, a lot to do and stuff. So it could be a lot to manage, and we just try to do it while we're all together. And just like right now, we have a great opportunity because we have all of you all together. And we have our mayor back there too, she's there. So that's good too, right? Congratulations, by the way. So we want to make sure that we keep, you know, keep the ball moving, try to get some things done. Of course, you're not going to finish everything today, you know, it doesn't work that way. But we take little steps, and we have our small wins and build up those bigger ones.
Edwards.
So on that matter, kind of the question you had, Vice Mayor there. At the beginning of last year, staff in the DDA met and we decided to slow things down a little bit, because they had no guiding documents on what they should be doing. So phase one of that was working with Georgia Tech to do the mission statements and understanding what they are and what they will do. The second phase was going to be a full-on strategic plan. However, Georgia Tech lost federal funding, and they're no longer offering that project. So now staff is scrounging to find resources, other grant money, to see if we can get a grant in place to get a strategic plan next year. Because they are quasi-judicial, kind of like us, we can't just go build whatever we want unless we've got some document to say that this needs to be done, and this is a priority for the city and the DDA. So that's kind of where we're looking to go at in the next year or so.
All right.
Can I ask a question to that point?
Okay.
Can y'all just base your strategic plan off of our comprehensive plan update? Would that give you enough guidance? Because we've got a lot of public input coming into this. We've got stuff around parks and all sorts of stuff, so.
So I'll turn to the city manager.
Right, I think although the comprehensive plan is in fact comprehensive, it touches a lot of topics, kind of broad stroke, right? And identifies, you know, needs and vision and prefers, right? But the level of detail that will go into their strategic and the comprehensive plan document won't be enough detail for that, right? To inform that in the manner that it needs to be. You agree? Is that okay? Can I make another point about relationship?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So we've talked a little bit about staff leveraging. We've talked about the funding that the city gave to the DDA last year. And so within that relationship, although the DDA is a separate entity enabled by the state, from a financial reporting perspective, the DDA has by all accounts, based on Governmental Accounting Standards Board criteria, you all are a component unit for financial reporting purposes of the city, right? And so that comes with a few requirements and do's and don'ts. I have provided to you a document that references the Gatsby statements relative to component unit for reporting purposes. And so once you and the DDA kind of can scope that out and look at it, please feel free to contact me with any of your questions. We'll just need to connect about the... We'll just need to connect about the financials. We'll need for a council to officially provide its decision on staff, right? Because that becomes a subsidy. The city and its tax dollars for that staff, right? And we are, and another entity, right, the DDA, is using that staff. So that needs to be recorded in our financial statements. In addition to the financial statements, there needs to be a note in what's called the management discussion and analysis portion of our audit report. And so I want to make sure that we get on the same page with that because our 2025 audit is coming due, and we'll have to report that $50,000, right? And the terms around that, so.
I think some of that, and thank you for providing this. Of course, we're going to get on to that. But one other thing is, you know, we have the intergovernmental agreement, and some of those things can be outlined in the agreement.
That's correct.
Simple as utilizing the space for the meeting, for example, things like that can go in there. So Attorney Williams will obviously have to be a big part of all of this.
Yes, definitely. Yeah, and as much as it's outlined in the agreement, it also need to be captured at the end of the year in our financial statements.
Correct.
So we'll make sure that happens.
Yes.
Okay?
And we're working on that too. I'll mention, like I mentioned, we have a lot of moving parts. We're working on also policies and procedure manuals for the DDA, employee handbook for the DDA, and different things like that, like the standard stuff that you would expect an organization to have. We're still working on those items too.
Okay. Will the city have an opportunity to look at those and make sure specifically they are in line with employment policies since you all use city staff? And then as a component unit for reporting purposes, we need to make sure they, whatever you do as far as financials and procurement and all of that is also in line with GASP regulations and GAAP regulations for the city?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We're going to rely on the city quite a bit, obviously. It's a baby DDA, and the baby DDA needs all the love it can get. So we want to make sure that you guys have your eyes and ears on everything that we can definitely work with the city to do with the common goal that we have, which is, you know, like I said, getting these things done.
Right. I would say, just one more point, Mayor. I would say, and Mr. Edwards and Mr. Bowie can attest to, you know, I say this all the time, it is so important for the city to understand, specifically with startup DDAs, that we need to find ways to subsidize the DDA. As you said already, you don't have a lot of, you don't have buying power and monies and things like that. Cities might have resources that we can, you know, invest, for lack of a better word, to see a return of investment at a later date, right? And so as we work together to get these meetings and retreats together, it's going to be so beneficial that our relationship is like-
Right.
-so we can grow. Economic development is the thing that will sustain this city over time.
If you think of it, I use the analogy of a baby, and I have three kids of my own. So you have them, they're small, you take care of them, and then they can go to work at some point.
Right.
And you can sort of have them to pay bills or something like that, so.
Yes, sir.
Right? So feed the baby.
Exactly.
Okay, so we're on three. Any more on three?
Thank you.
Any more on three? No more on three, we're going to go to four, D, which is the logo and branding.
Now I don't want to talk about it.
Now's the time.
So we do have, we did go through a process. Let me just tell you briefly how it came about. So, you know, during one of the meetings, we need to have a brand, we should have a logo. Let's, do we know anybody that can design a logo? And then we have engaged with one designer to come up with a logo. Then we came into contact with another group who was actually going to do the passport book, their piecebook, because of their business name. And they, we said, we're still looking for a logo, so can you produce some examples of a logo as well? Kind of fill it out. And so we went through that process, and then we had a meeting where we had to select a logo. And then this is what we had come up with as the winning logo, which is, oh, yes. That was the winning logo from all the logos that we had presented. And now we would definitely want to have your feedback as the council looking at, you know, City of Clarkston, past, present, and future, to see, you know, your feedback on the logo.
Okay, comments?
That's nice. That's the White House.
Oh.
Yeah, that's yours.
Yeah, that's actually not the one, is it? It's supposed to, the little house. That's, I thought we had approved it without the White House, and then she revised it. And she took the White House out.
And it's a very boring guy.
Yeah, but this was actually one that we sent back for revision, and the new one does not have the White House in it. She used it as a center for the City Hall. And then, but it came out, and we put the other house in.
That's not the-
Yeah, that's not the, that's not the correct one.
It's behind you.
I'm looking at all the screen.
Great. Councilwoman Hood.
Do you have a question?
I love the inspiration of it. I wonder when it is reduced to a size where it would go on letterhead or on marketing materials at a much smaller scale, will those details be lost?
So on the next slide over, I believe, there's going to be a page that shows logo variations. And this is what it would reduce to, something like this. And again, this is not the correct one, because it still has the White House on it. But those other versions are the reduced-down version for other applications. Like you might have it on a letterhead, or you might have it on a T-shirt, different things.
Mike?
Yes. It might help to have a mock-up of letterhead with that as the intended size so that you can determine whether those details are lost or not.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just mentioned, all of your feedback right now is super important. So you can tell me that you hate this logo, it's not what you like, and that's totally fine. I have no emotional attachment to this logo. I just want to have something to work with so we can get to work with it, that's why I want it, you know? And whatever jives with the city is going to jive with the DDA, and has to be, you know, definitely appreciate your feedback. So, you know, maybe it's too complicated would be part of the feedback, or too many colors or not enough colors, you know? Any other feedback?
City Manager has comment.
I think I made this comment in one of the meetings that we had with, that I was in with you all. I think the, I know that the White House is being removed, and I can't remember what replaced it.
It was just smaller buildings, structures.
Buildings, yeah.
And then the little path, because we want to emphasize the walkability of the path.
Yes, the path, we did. Yeah. I think once you all get to see the modifications, the revisions, it'll be better. One of the, one of the points I made to this one is that the development component kind of gets lost in all of the artistry, all the, like, the greenery and all of that. This might be good for branding on a T-shirt, but when it comes to kind of relaying the message that we are ripe, right, for development, this may not be, that may not be the way to go.
And, you know, I'm not opposed to this either. You know, I mentioned that we did go through the process of having different styles of logos. What we could do is, we can share all of them with you guys, and then you guys can just see. This is, of course, the one that we landed on, the one we were picking, but there's other styles out there as well, and maybe it's more of what you guys would envision for the city and for the growth and for the development and everything else. So we could definitely kind of take a step to the side and just show you all of them, and then get your feedback from the group. And, you know, we want to get it right, you know? We want to make sure, I mean, it's also something like, if you don't get it right, you can always just change it. It was like, that's the thing about a logo. Logos get updated all the time. Coca-Cola's logo is so different, and they keep changing things around. So, but we would love the feedback on this and then the other ones, as well, if that's something that you want us to do.
So like, the person who was doing the passport had some other logos that were less colorful, but, not colorful, but, you know, it was pretty-
I would say modern, maybe.
Right.
Modern style.
Yeah.
Can I add a comment?
Geometric, different, different way of presenting, you know? And both designs came from us, again, giving them feedback on like, what is, what's the core of the city? What are, is important to the city? Of course, trees and the pathways, the forest, which is a forest. And we named all these elements, and so it kind of went into the logo design. But one designer took it more like where it's scenery, and then the other designer had it more in graphic, geometric type of different designs that kind of represented it differently. So, and that's where the decision came from, was is Clarkston going to be more scenery like that in the vibe for the DDA in the future, or is it more modernization and geometric? I think that's where the discussion landed.
Yep. So I think to that point, and kind of jumping off of what City Manager mentioned as well, I think you're, so typically with logos, what you're wanting to do is have your mark and then the text part of the logo be really versatile, especially for something, if y'all are doing several different things, you're wanting something that can translate across pictures and everything else. The theme, the background that you have in there, we don't have to pull that, but like the trees and everything does capture, I think, the general feel of what you're wanting to do. And so if you, if you want to take a recommendation on it, I would recommend you lean more into that as your overall, you know, if I were to build that out as a webpage or something else, that would be the background art, and your mark and the text connected to it would be complementary, but you would pull that off when you're using on letterhead, business cards, things like that. And you could actually even have that, you know, getting really tangible with it. You could have a business card that has all of that really vibrant colors and pictures and everything that represents the feel of what you're going through on the back, and then the side that has all the information has Clarkston DDA information, things like that. Just as an example of a type of mock-up. So I would be interested in seeing kind of other designs you'll have, especially if you have a more updated version of it.
Yeah. Jacob, would you have access to those?
We can do it all.
I can do that later, because it's almost two minutes before.
We need to wrap it up, because it's almost seven, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do this later.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, thank you.
Thank you all.
I'll take a-
It's a little, a new one.
Hold on, yeah. But we'll, we'll take-
We'll look at it.
Later, with the other ones.
Hi, Madam Mayor.
Is that the email that was just there?
No, no. So I'll take a motion.
Move the adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved, second adjourn. My, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Dr. Garcia, and safe travels.
Thank you.
Okay. I know we need exactly one minute.
We need a break.
Get a bathroom.
And thank you. This meeting is called to order. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks, and this is the November 6, 2025 council meeting. I will start with the roll call with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Carroll.
Present.
Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
Councilman Perkins.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
Councilwoman Adie.
Present.
And I will recognize our city manager, Shakuya Miller Thornton. And at this time, are there any updates or additions to the agenda?
Have a update or addition?
Yes.
I move that we add an executive session is item, I guess it would be three, I'm looking at the wrong agenda.
So it'd be like?
Three G.
No, you want it at the end.
Ten.
You want it like nine, nine G.
Nine G. To discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, so we're going to add executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Is there a second? Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded that we add nine G, which is an executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Is there any question, any discussion, you ready for a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed, and then we'll move on to the agenda, starting with the public hearing for the public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2026 operating and enterprise fund budgets. At this time, Ms., do we have anyone signed up? Okay, no one signed up?
We do have four individuals signed up, but there's no items listed, so I'm not sure if it's for the council meeting or items or just the public hearing.
Okay, did anyone sign up for this item? Okay, anyone sign up for this item? Anyone sign up for this item? Hearing none, this item is now closed. We'll move on to four, which is presentation administrative business, starting with the employee of the month. Dr. Baker is not here, so that will be our city manager, Miller Thornton.
Can I do it from here, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So our employee of the month for October 2025 is LaStacia Evans Martin. This employee consistently demonstrates exemplary job performance through promptness, efficiency, and dedication to completing assigned tasks with excellence. They approach their work with professionalism and a consistently positive attitude, always ready to assist fellow staff members with a smile. Over 10 years of dedicated service to the City of Clarkson, this employee has remained steadfast in aligning their work with the city's goals and values, contributing meaningfully to the organization's success. Ms. Evans Martin also exemplifies resilience and initiative. Despite personal challenges at home, they continue to meet responsibilities with grace, focus, and optimism. Their kindness and her kindness and compassion extend beyond the workplace, as seen during community events such as the food drive and Refugee Coffee 5K. The community has repeatedly expressed gratitude for her warmth, understanding, and genuine care qualities that make this employee an invaluable member of Team Clarkson. Ms. LaStacia.
There she is.
We are presenting her with a certificate of recognition and a fifty dollar gift card.
Yay, and we're gonna, we're gonna come down and take a photo once we do all of these presentations, so we can do it at one time. Okay, but congratulations. We'll move on to our police department awards, and that would be Assistant Chief Todd and Chief Hudson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. We're honored and glad to recognize some of our police officers here for our incident occurred, if I can read the narrative to you briefly. At approximately 2:43 a.m., Officer Earl received a locked safety alert for a stolen vehicle, 2020 Honda Electra, entering the city limits. Acting swiftly with precision coordination, Sergeant Hilton, Officer Earl, Officer Walter, Officer Brown responded and located a stolen vehicle in Clarkson Station Apartments. During this incident, the suspect later violently rammed Sergeant Hilton's patrol car multiple times in an attempt to flee by vehicle, but instead he exited vehicle and fled on foot in a foot pursuit and suit. At that time, Officer Earl dislodged his taser, which did not totally stop the suspect from running. Instead, Officer Walter discriminated athletic abilities and controlled and apprehended the suspect by tackling him. Officer Brown handled the scene and collected evidence and transported suspect to jail, despite of the clear danger to themselves and all the officers here that maintained their tactical control, followed departmental policy, and worked seamlessly to contain the suspect. These officers' collective actions directly resulted in the recovery of a stolen vehicle, seizure of a Glock 19 handgun with ammunition, and the safe arrest of a dangerous felon responsible for multiple offenses. I must note also, these officers also played a pivotal role in apprehending our murder suspect as well. Council, I would like to present the merit award for excellent arrest to Sergeant Hilton, Officer Earl, Officer Walter, and Officer Brown.
All right. All right, congratulations, and we'll come down again to take a group photo with you, but thank you for your service to the city. We really appreciate it. We'll move to item 4C, which is the business of the month, and that's for October 2025, November 2025. We'll go ahead with Mr. Bowie.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. It is my pleasure to recognize Famous Laundromat and Cleaners as the City of Clarkson's October 2025 Business of the Month. Famous Laundromat and Cleaners is a family-owned business led by Mr. Khabab Esfa that has transformed the simple task of doing laundry into a clean, comfortable, and community-centered experience. Their team is dedicated to providing dependable service, modern amenities, and a welcoming space for all of our residents. The owners take pride in supporting Clarkson's diverse community by partnering with local nonprofit organizations, sharing neighborhood resources inside their facility, and even offering free laundry services to residents facing financial challenges. Please join me in congratulating Famous Laundromat and Cleaners for their continued commitment to quality customer care and community engagement here in the City of Clarkson.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Bowie, will you tell us where they're located?
Yes, they're located at 854 Montreal Road here in Clarkson.
Okay, all right. And so at this time, we're going to take the one with the award as well as the officers with the council. Okay. You also have what? Oh, yeah, okay, so.
I think the officers want to go though.
Yeah, so we'll, let's do this. We'll do this segment of photo hoops and celebration, and then we'll move to the next segment. Okay, all right, so council will come down for the photos.
Yes, I have a motion.
Yes. Yes.
So I would like to move in our current agenda, item 9C, to consider the proclamation designating October as National Code Compliance Month up to 4E. Well, 4, what? 4E, it has to be E.
Yeah, so 4, well, you want to do 4E and 4C, you want to do C and D?
Yes.
And move that up to E and F?
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a second?
I think so, a second.
You think so, okay.
Yes.
Trying to do the math on this.
So it's been properly moved and seconded that we move items 9C and 9D to 4E and F. Are you ready for a question?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Now we'll move to the minutes, which is to approve the following minutes. October 7, 2025, city council meeting. Number two, October 28, 2025, special call city council meeting budget presentation. And number three, October 28, 2025, city council work session. All in here to take a motion for those minutes.
Yes, I move to approve the minutes of October 7, 2025, city council meeting, October 28, 2025, special call city council meeting budget presentation, and October 28, 2025, city council work session.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the following minutes. October 7, 2025, city council meeting, October 28, 2025, special call city council meeting budget presentation, October 28, 2025, city council work session. Is there any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. We'll now move, which is now our 4E, to present a proclamation designating October as National Code Compliance Month, and that will be done by Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this, we're looking to recognize the code enforcement officers as they provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens living in the communities throughout the United States through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, environmental, property maintenance, and other local code enforcement offices. And the City of Clarkson, Georgia recognizes that its code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible, and who are committed to promoting life safety, enhancing neighborhood aesthetics through their daily work. And we would like to recognize both of our code enforcement officers tonight, Shanitha Smith and Darren Hammond, and just some recent awards they've received. Both officers did receive American Association of Code Enforcement Certificates of Completion from the national conference they attended last year. And then recently, Officer Shanitha Smith received the Georgia Association of Code Enforcement Officer Leadership and Management Certificate as well. So they are committed to this community in enhancing their education and leadership skills, so if they would like to come up, we'd present the certificates.
Let's give them a round of applause. And then we'll, after we do the second one, we'll come back down for the, for our group photo. And that leads to item 4F, which is the proclamation designating October as National Community Planning Month. The root.
All right, so the American Planning Association endorses the national observance as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community and how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to housing, transportation, and land use challenges. And the City of Clarkson is proud to recognize the ongoing efforts of its Planning and Economic Development Department, Planning and Zoning Board, and all community partners whose dedication and expertise ensure that Clarkson remains a connected, inclusive, and forward-thinking city. And further on this, this is also a presentation of the national award we won for community engagement for our Greenway Plan. So I would like to officially present that to the city council.
All right, thank you, and you can show that to everybody so we can see, and we'll come down now to take that group photo, so look at that award. Amen.
Mayor.
All right. Okay, let's go down. Yes.
We didn't take a vote on either one yet.
No.
We didn't take, you don't, okay.
They both consent, so.
Well, we moved them from. Yeah, they were new business.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor, I'll take a motion for both.
I move that we approve the proclamations for 9C and 9D that are now 4E and F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, it's been somewhat properly moved and seconded that we approve the proclamations for October as National Code Compliance Month and October as National Community Planning Month. Are you ready for the discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed, we can come down and take the photo for. We can come down and take the photo for.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't.
Then what you think?
You keep going. Don't tell nothing to get you. It's your heart, no more. Take your stretch and put it in your bag.
All right.
Everybody, you're ready.
Three, two, one, okay, perfect.
Okay, okay. No, 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 no. Richard. So you guys. Thank you, thank you.
YT, you're just like a traffic cone, you should come over here.
I can't say nothing.
All right, three, two, one, perfect.
Okay, we'll keep going. All right. Oh, Jesus. Oh, it don't, it don't, we're gonna keep it, we are ready to go. All right, everyone.
All right. Point of order.
Point of order, and we're gonna keep it going. Next, we're gonna do the city manager's report. Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, point of order, to make, are we, are we right with the law? Okay, you gave me a look earlier, so, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll start with the city manager's report.
All righty, so, from the city manager's office, we have approved the following contracts under the city manager's spending authority. Jenny King, a month-to-month agreement for cleaning services for this building. Robert Haff, statement of work for $22,750. Communication support estimated 25 hours per week at $70 an hour for 13 weeks. And then 5380 Studios LLC for $2,200 for the retirement celebration for chief. For chief, okay. For our municipal court, the department overview case volume for October 2025. The court processed a total of 189 citations and closed a total of 160 citations. We have started the daytime plea and arraignment calendar, which started on October 16th, and that new calendar worked out just fine. Currently, we are looking to, we are engaging with court management services, software providers. Right now, we use Tyler Technologies, and so as we work to integrate our software in a way where we don't have 45 platforms that have to report to our finance department, we are looking to engage with a service provider, a software provider, that will help us to integrate some of those platforms. Communications Department, of course, we have engaged with Robert Haff to offer communication support for our administration department. Activities that have been completed successfully so far was update of the website with voter registration information. We've hosted meetings with SISIN for a media database and hosted civic points meetings. These are all public-facing interfaces within, that, that we are looking to engage with on our website. Completed deliverables were flyers for some of our events. Economic Mobility Leadership Institute deliverables for the weeks that we have had those classes. For equity and community empowerment, we provided some resources to organizations and the community to help to face this food insecurity that is, has now been placed with a reduction and elimination of SNAP benefits. Ms. Yolanda has completed some training. She participated in a webinar focused on addressing childhood trauma and protective strategies. She's attended a session on mental health support for refugee populations and engaged in part one and of a two-part child protection training series. Parks and Recreation Department, Carlos Perez is scheduled to conduct virtual meetings with Mayor Burks, I think that's already happened, and Councilmember Carroll in November. On Thursday, October 23rd, Mr. Duncan met with NPP to discuss future staffing and programming needs for the Parks and Rec Department. Mr. Duncan is also preparing a request for proposal for a new pool management company for the 2026 season. He's working on the SPOS project list for Mylan Park. And on Monday, August 25th, Musco Lighting Company delivered lighting equipment to Mylan Park in preparation for the installation of the lights at the upper field. City of Clarkston Police Department report, crime stats for October, 1 through 31, zero homicides, zero rapes, two robberies, 17 assault cases, one burglary, five thefts, and two motor vehicle thefts. Patrol activities were citations issued 125, accident reports 42, incident reports 146 and a, 141, and arrests 46. Training and professional development for the police department. Officer Patterson attended 72 hours of in-person supervision training at the Georgia Public Safety Training Center. Officer Reese completed 16 hours of in-person intoxicilizer 9000 training at the Georgia Public Safety Center, which certified him to operate the latest infrared-based breathalyzer used to measure breath alcohol content. Officer Jay Johnson completed 24 hours of in-person, in-person criminal procedure course at Georgia Public Safety Training Center. It provides an overview of the U.S. Constitution and Bill of Rights. Additionally, within the economic leadership team, we are formalizing our, we're, well, yes, formula, formulating our, our. I was talking too fast. We're, we're formalizing our culture champions, uh, plan, and that plan is to, to look at current culture within the organization, to determine the current state of culture and to implement action plans to make the culture better within the organization. And this will be a commitment across not only the EOT, ELT team, but across the organization, and will become a matter of policy. So once the document and the plan is complete, we'll present a copy of that to council, and we will, we will present reports regularly on where we are in that progress. Thank you.
Any questions? That concludes your report.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the next report with the city attorney.
Just congratulations to Mayor Burks and Councilmember Bell on your reelection, as well as to our newly elected council members.
Thank you. We'll move to city council remarks or reports, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first comment for tonight is for our chief. This is our last meeting before your retirement. I'm sorry, am I out of order?
No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Okay, well, this is our last meeting before you retire, and I want to bid you farewell. We appreciate the service that you gave the city, and I think that all of our residents can share that with me. So, and I'm only saying it because I just knew that it was the last meeting. Next time, send me a text. So, yes, we appreciate your service, and I hope retirement is everything you want it to be. I did have the privilege of attending the trunk-or-treat compliments of Madam Mayor and the city staff. Suzie Keys was orchestrating that, and I want to say that it was really a very good turnout. We really saw the community in its rarest form. And if we had to pick a employee that was dressed to the fullest for Halloween, it would have to be Cruella, Cruella de Vil, which was Suzie Keys. So I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out to that event, and it was really, really nice. And I want to remind everybody that November 22nd is our next food drive. I know we have a SNAP deficit going on right now, so with the help of our city manager, we have expanded those food boxes to 600. That is gonna be November the 22nd at Tahoe Village Shopping Center, which is the Food Mark Plaza. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Oh, and I would like to thank the mayor, YT Bell, Dean Moore, and Lynn Bayon and Nick Crawford for running for city council. I want to welcome the mayor back, welcome YT back, welcome Dean Moore back, and welcome to the team, Ms. Bayon, and I am very eager and excited to work with each and every one of you. Thank you. Oh, we had an awesome Survivor Summit! Oh, my God, it was amazing. That was our second annual Survivor Summit. Our mayor is a survivor, and I am a, I am a survivor, but on a different side of the tracks. I, I lost my sister in 2019, so we share a platform for survivors of breast cancer and domestic violence. So I want to thank the city manager, as well as staff, for representing the police department. Chief, thank you for the badges, which are purple and pink, to symbolize both events, but the staff was amazing. They came, the, the, if you did not come, the aesthetics were beautiful. All month, we celebrated the mayor and domestic violence awareness in pink and purple, so I want to thank the staff. You guys really did a great job with that. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Carroll?
Yes, I would like to echo Vice Mayor Johnson in thanking Chief Hudson for her service. You know, you've been on the chief ever since I've been in the council, which is almost nine years now. I appreciate all the good work you've done. I think we can tell from the awards tonight and just the general overall tenure of the police department, you've gotten the police department to a good place, and you're leaving, you know, with a great job accomplished, so I appreciate all the work that you've done over the years. I also want to congratulate Mayor Burks, Councilwoman YT Bell, on the reelection. Congratulate to Dean Moore and Lynn Bayon on being elected, and thank you to Nick Crawford for running as well. I appreciate the city staff putting on a smooth election. You know, I think everything went well. You know, democracy only works if people are willing to run and put their name in the ring, which is hard sometimes, so I appreciate everyone that does that, whether they succeed or not, and that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Bell?
So, of course, happy retirement, chief. If you don't know, come to the party on the 21st of November. That'll be the last hurrah for chief, right? Thank you for all your service and all you've done. You've been here since I've been here, and before, because I was an intern first, and you were here. Thank you to the mayor and the vice mayor for putting on the second annual Survivor Summit and allowing me to come and share that I'm also a survivor of domestic violence, as well as, thank you for the whole state, and thank you for every Clarkston resident that turned out, not only for our local elections, but also for the Public Service Commission. I'm just gonna change the trajectory of our state. It's been 20 years since we had representation that cared more about affordability than the money they're gonna put in their pockets on that board, so grateful for that. But also, just thank y'all. Thank y'all for believing in me and my vision for the city, and thank you for supporting me again. I look forward to working with my colleagues on the board, but also, of course, Dean and Lynn, looking forward to work with y'all. On these next four years, I plan to be as bold as possible. Y'all might get irritated with me, but I got a lot of work I need to finish doing, and a lot of stuff on economic growth for this city, but also community development and fostering a level of trust with the city and the residents, so thank y'all.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, it has already been said, but congratulations to all of our new council members. Look forward to working with y'all. Congratulations again to Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Bell. So I look forward to working with y'all some more over the coming, in the new year as well. So I attended the Faith in Blue Summit on October 10th, so appreciate our police department for putting that on, helped sling some pizza slices with, I believe, our Public Works folks and other volunteers, so appreciate y'all for all the work that you put into events like that. I also was able to make a stop-in on October 18th to the Domestic Violence and Breast Cancer Survivor Summit, so thank you all for putting that on and for sharing parts of your stories. I think it was really powerful to hear just the, put names and faces with things that people experience, and just that you were equipping people with the tools they need to get out of situations that no one should experience. So, again, thank you all for your leadership in that. Part of the reason that I only briefly attended the Survivor Summit is I accidentally ended up at the wrong event beforehand, so before that, I accidentally attended the Black Autoimmune Disease Summit, put on by the Myasthenia gravis Holistic Society, and they were more than gracious to share all the things that their organization is doing. It was actually a pretty cool event, the Clarkston Community Center. However, I did end up with a black, with Myasthenia gravis t-shirt. It might come as a surprise, but none of the things on that t-shirt apply to me, so if anyone knows anyone with Myasthenia gravis and would like that t-shirt, feel free to give me a call. I won't put you on Facebook or anything, but, you know. Of course, I guess if I wore it, it would probably raise a lot of awareness.
There you go.
It would raise a lot of questions, so maybe I need to rethink this.
That might be that. That's your community involvement.
You know, I could raise some funds for this. This could be, okay, I'm rethinking that.
Rethinking.
So, that's it. We'll get back to marketing branding. So, on October 31st, I hosted an emergency Zoom call with local community leaders to address what at the time was the impending cuts to SNAP, ironically, which I think is, perfectly illustrates the chaos that we're experiencing during that call. A judge ordered the USDA to release their contingency funding as we were having conversations on how to address it and how to communicate with different community leaders. After talking with several of our congresspeople in Washington, you know, our understanding is that funding is limited, and unless the government reopens, there is not more coming. Even if the government does reopen, my understanding is there's a lot on the chopping block. To give you an idea of the human impact in DeKalb County, currently, in DeKalb, $20.8 million a month are dispersed for SNAP beneficiaries. That's about 54,124 households, and it represents over 100,000 people in our county alone. It's harder to get a picture of that in Clarkston because of how the data operates, but you could estimate that about 20 to 35% of Clarkston families are relying on SNAP in temporary instances for needy families in order to feed their kids, to feed themselves, and to make ends meet. This is a massive issue. It's more than we have, are able to adequately address with our city budget, I would argue even with the county budget, and it is a huge problem. This is one small piece of a lot of different programs that people use to keep them from tipping over the edge, from losing their housing. I mean, HUD is on the chopping block. A lot of the conversations right now, as many of you probably know, are around healthcare. There are over 70,000 families that are on, receiving medical, you know, assistance, low-income Medicaid, in DeKalb County alone. That's over, I believe, one in five families in DeKalb. So, this is a huge humanitarian issue. And so we, we talked about just how can we work together as leaders, even if we can't do anything at the scale of what is coming, the best we can do is communicate and trying to coordinate our limited resources to more effectively serve our community. to more effectively serve our constituents. Um, so, if you have phone numbers, if you're the kind of person that likes to make calls, please advocate. Um, you know, this, this is something that is, is ongoing as we speak and has a ripple effect into future generations in terms of the, the impact that food insecurity, housing insecurity, education, all of these things have. We will be seeing the impact of this for generations. So, I appreciate the food drive coming up on November 22nd, uh, that we were able to allocate additional funding for it. Um, and I hope we can continue pushing for reopening of these programs so that our community can make ends meet. I have nothing further to report.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, Councilwoman Adie?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
To you, YT Bell, and the new council members. Besides that, I'd like to share, uh, October 10th, I attended Faith in Blue at the Mylan Park.
Is it, is there a mic, is your mic working? Okay, okay. Push it, come a little closer to it, because we can't hear you. No, it's not working.
Can you hear me now?
Barely, but tap it hard, tap it and see. No? Okay, let's see. Okay, we're gonna switch. Okay.
Okay, sorry for that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, okay.
So, I said congratulations to Mayor and YT Bell and the new council members. I'm looking forward to working with you. Uh, besides that, uh, October 10th, I attended Faith in Blue at the Mylan Park, where we did have a lot of people come there and interact, and, uh, it was very interesting. Uh, it was for the first time that I attended such an event, because I just joined last year. And, uh, October 11th, I volunteered at the Friends of Forty Oaks.
Oh, yeah.
So, we did have a couple of people working there, and, uh, I really loved that. I'm going to do more volunteer after that. Besides that, then, uh, October 18th, we had the Second Annual Anniversary of Breast Cancer and Domestic Violence, and, uh, that's my second time that I attend. I was present last year as well. And it was very interesting. I did learn a lot. I myself am breast cancer survivor. So, it was interesting for me as well, and I learned a lot. And, uh, besides that, I, I recently got approved to join Atlanta Regional Commission Advisory Board on Aging, and, uh, October 21st, I attended the first meeting there, uh, which is so interesting, and I hope to be able to learn how to help more seniors in our city of Clarkston through that committee.
Great. That's a clap right there.
Yeah, well, October 25th, there was a health fair in, in Clarkston, and, uh, I went there. I did interact with a lot of refugees, and, uh, I could help them in some different ways. I had some people donating some stuff, and then I helped, and I met some people that needed that stuff. So, coordinating between them was so interesting for me. And thank you all. I'm sorry, that microphone is not working today.
Thank you. And as we switch, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I attended Faith in Blue, an excellent event. I enjoy that every year. Um, I attended the community meeting that the mayor called, uh, to discuss the proposed changes to, uh, the zoning code related to NR3 zoning district. That's our neighborhood residential higher density. We had a great turnout on that, great discussion, and I believe the mayor, uh, is going to be holding another one of those meetings, uh, and that information will be provided. Um, want to, uh, thank everybody who came out to vote, uh, and congratulations to those who were elected and those who were reelected. And then finally, we have an event, which I think is very important, coming up, uh, about cleaning up our city. And, um, I, all council members were asked to sign up. I, I have signed up for Team Marcus. So, we're gonna outcompete everybody. That's right. So, I urge you to, um, look at that information. It's online and on social media, and, uh, make plans to sign up and, uh, get our city cleaned up. Looking good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our council reports. Um, and then I'll do my report. Again, I attended the Faith in Blue activity, and, and thank you again for the Second Annual, um, Survivor Summit. Staff, great job, and to all, not only staff, but council who participated and attended, thank you so much. Um, trunk or treat, as always. It was a blast. The kids had a wonderful time. I want to thank all the staff for doing that, and they're getting excited, because next year will be the 10th year celebration. So, we gotta make sure we do that with a bang. Um, I did, uh, participate with the Friends of Forty Oaks in terms of the cleanup, and on that same day, we also had the farmer's market, um, where we're trying to get you ready for the real spring effect of having that, uh, making sure that we have wholesome, organic food for our residents. And so, we're looking forward to having that. And then on Monday, actually, um, that's why you always have to be nice to where you used to work before, um, I attended an emergency meeting, uh, with Fulton deKalb Hospital Authority. And so, we had an emergency meeting to address food insecurity. And we're looking at it both from Fulton and DeKalb County across not only the food bank, but other entities to see how we can do that and leveraging funds, and making sure in terms of those people who are distributing the food have a way of connecting, but also making sure those who need food have a way to be able to access and utilize different ways to make sure that information is provided across the board. Because we found a lot of redundancy, and so, what we're trying to make sure that we do is look at how do we address not only the redundancy, but then how do we make sure that, um, we're able to guide and support individuals in this, uh, situation that we're in now. This is gonna be for a while, right? And so, you're gonna see the aftermath of this for a while. And so, that's why it's very important that we collectively work together, but also work with those entities that have the money, the power, to make influence and make those necessary changes. So, I was very grateful to be a part of that and the things to come. Um, again, thank you for the opportunity to serve as mayor again, and I want to thank, uh, Sean Alexander Bright for also making sure that we have democracy. And thank, uh, Councilwoman Bell, as well as Dean Moore and Lynn Bayon, uh, who now is gonna be our first, uh, Caribbean American to serve on the council as well. So, um, Chief, thank you. Thank you for, uh, the years of service that you provided. Um, thank you for making sure we focus more on community policing, and thank you for continuously thinking of how do we promote the police in a positive direction. So, I appreciate all the work that you've been doing. So, with that, I will move to our next item, which is public comments. Oh, and then I forgot something. So, um, Mr. Edwards was not there when we had our community meeting, but he will be there to facilitate the community meeting that we will have on November 17th. Um, it, first, we will have an open house to talk about housing density from 4:30 to 6:30. Followed by that, we will have the second round of community meetings to discuss the upcoming NR3. So, I want to make sure you put that on the calendar. It will be on our city's website for that, but again, on, uh, November 17th, from 4:30 to 3:30, 4:30 to 6:30, housing density open house, and then 6:30 community meeting. And so, that will take care of the text amendment items, um, and all of that will be on the website, and it will be under the November 18th P&amp;Z, uh, meeting agenda packet. Okay? All right, with that, I will move to consent agenda. But before I do that, we will have public comments, and we'll have, any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes, and it's not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing, and this will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The, the city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comments. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly and timely manner. And then I also want to make sure, please make sure you do sign up for our cleanup day. This, this is how, you know, a lot of times we get the ideas and the support from our community, and so, I want to make sure to recognize Martha. This is one part of it. We have other pieces of it, but when you come to us, it's great to have that feedback, and you're seeing the work in terms of what your public comments can do, your feedback in terms of cha-changing and shaping the city. So, with that, who did we have sign up?
Gladys Everson.
Okay. Oh, I forgot that part, too. I'm sorry. So, we, I'm sorry. My mind. Um, we started our, um, Economic Mobility Leadership Institute cohorts for home ownership, and those are happening, um, Thursdays at 6 o'clock. If you're interested in finding out about, um, potentially owning your own home in Clarkston or being prepared to buy a home, that's part of what we're doing, so you can join it now. We've partnered with the Urban League of Atlanta, so they are going to be the ones presenting those classes. So, for anyone who lives in the city of Clarkston, it is free. We provide food, we provide education, and if you're a part of that class, at the end of it, you will have a raffle, be a part of a raffle for a $750 gift card. So, with that, Gladys, come on up.
Well, good evening, everybody. I am Gladys Everson, and I was introduced to the Home Buying Program by Ms. Beverly Burks, and I've been a resident in Clarkston since 1991. I live in Spring Douglas Apartments, and I've been living there since, since 1991. So, I'm stepping on our feet, and I was telling Ms. Burks about my, you know, living arrangements over at the Spring Douglas Apartments, and I just spoke to code enforcement, because I have a lot of mold and everything now. And I'm proud of my age. A lot of people don't have to tell it, but I'm 65, and my husband's 69, but we in the hell in the lot. And we did have somebody from Clarkston to come out and look at it, but we haven't heard anything. And that's been a couple of weeks. Glad y'all just keep us in your prayers, and I do, like I tell Beverly, I want to see Clarkston grow. It was beautiful when I came. And I have some challenges here, and I wanted to leave, and I said, "No, I'm staying in Clarkston, because it's beautiful." And this is why I'm, you know, planning on staying on the law of community strength, but I want all of us as one big old family to make Clarkston come back as a wonderful, beautiful community, which will come to pass. And nice, right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else do we have? Sean Waters?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Congratulations on your reelection. YT, congratulations. Welcome, new members of our council. Um, I just wanted to point out a, a comment that will be, uh, probably brought up again by my, uh, wonderful neighbor, uh, Robert Winfrey. The speed on Norman Road has just gotten excessive and dangerous. I saw several kids almost get creamed Halloween night crossing into Mylan Park. So, um, just something I want to make law enforcement aware of, that the speed is just a little out of control, as well as a lot of the noise coming out of Mylan Park. Um, and that's all. I just wanted to also say, uh, give out heartfelt thanks to our chief on her, um, wonderful years of service in our community, and wishing you all the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to come back and say thank you to Beverly, uh, to Deborah Johnson, too. She always had me to come out to help with the food drive, and I'm glad you just announced that to let me know it's coming up again. But I knew her for years, and she's been great to me and to the community. So, I appreciate you too, Deborah.
Thank you. Who else did we have?
Robert Winfrey.
Mr. Winfrey?
Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager, and others, I'm in full support of what Sean presented to y'all. I've had several close calls trying to get out my driveway. Now, a couple more weeks, I'll be 81 years old, and I don't move like I used to move. So, something needs to be done down there. Number two, I love to grow my own vegetables and my own fruit. I got a big problem with the deers. Now, North Fulton County, South Cuyahoga County has set up something. The hunters can go in there with crossbows or compound bows. And I wish y'all could find out what it takes for me to have a nuisance permit. I have eight scubandine vines. I didn't fill up a gallon this year because of the deers. When my okra and beans get up, they come and eat the cock eye. That plant's no good anymore. I have to take it out and put another one in. And I'm living off social security, and them plants don't come cheap now. So, if y'all could look into that for me, I certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else did we have signed up?
Dean Moore.
You don't have to speak if you don't want to. You don't have to speak. You know, you got, you don't have four years to speak. You don't have to speak now.
Well, I, I understand that there was an item on the agenda from the work session. I was not here for that, and that, um, it may, uh, be, I'm here to answer questions for anybody that may have any questions about the agenda item that I missed.
We hadn't hit it yet. It's at the end. So, we'll talk to you.
I signed up to see, to speak at the end.
Okay, we got you covered. Thank you. All right, who's next?
Martha Brown.
Hi, I'm Martha Brown, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their service, and I appreciate everyone so much. I, I, I know it's a lot of work being a city council person, and congratulations to everybody that got reelected, and the new people joining the council. This is really exciting. I also wanted to, um, say that I signed up for the cleanup, but I didn't know I could be on Team Marcus, so I wanted to check in and all that. Gonna be on, I'm gonna be on the city manager's team. We're gonna kick some ass.
Okay.
But I did, I do want to say thank you, Beverly, for noticing, acknowledging, and appreciating me coming. And, uh, it is very difficult and stressful, and actually sometimes traumatic, coming to council meetings and speaking up and speaking up and speaking up and speaking up. So, uh, I'm really excited for the city and that we're gonna be doing something, and it was nice, because I'm already out there doing it, and it'll be fun to do it with everybody else. Uh, I also wanted to say, I don't even know if I can get through this without... I'm gonna really miss you, Chief.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for all your service, and I, um, when we moved here, uh, oh, uh, just how, how much you've brought to this community, and even though there's been some ups and downs and all arounds, um, you're really gonna be truly missed. I mean, really, and thank you so much for everything. All right, thank you.
At cleanup! All right. Our city manager is very competitive, so, yes. Who do we have next? And what was the date again? We want to make sure we have the date.
15.
November 15th, November 15th. Okay. From what time to what time? 10 to 1. Okay. Okay. Okay, and you'll see that on the website for more information.
Point of clarity. Because this is the, um, the council meeting, not the work session, do you want, Mr.? you want Mr. Moore to come back and make his comment now?
I think he's coming more so from the historic preservation.
But that, but he still wouldn't be able to speak.
Yeah, we're gonna.
But he still wouldn't be able to speak because it's the.
Because I think when we talked about it, we asked to have the, those two individuals to come and speak on it at that time.
That's what I should say.
Right. So he can, we can have him to address it because that was part of the issue when we had the discussion, that the historic preservations in the Friends of Forty Oaks at that time were not there for us to ask, ask questions and so the city manager asked someone from the historic preservation to come to the meeting so that we could talk about that. Right?
Right, and they weren't even aware of.
Now, I get that part, but I'm just talking about the order of operations and how we usually function because it's, I'm asking, should he speak now and address that because it's still open space now for public comment because it is the council meeting. Typically, we don't allow people to speak and so we were setting a precedent. That's why I'm asking for clarity.
Right, so we're not necessarily setting a precedent because this was an item, we didn't have all the players involved and so we asked the city manager to bring those individuals to come and talk more about it. So it's, it's okay.
It's not a public comment.
Right. So we can just, if it's not an issue with anybody, we can just have it at that time with the agenda item, just to talk about it, but thanks for bringing that point up. Did we have anyone else sign up? Okay, we'll keep it going and this is the best part because we don't have old business and Councilman Carroll will take care of the consent agenda because he has been voluntold and with the consent agenda, these are items that require no further discussion and we will at one time approve all of these items. I do want to recognize the fact that we do have, are they on here? The representative from the Clarkston Community Center, so I did want to make sure that we recognize that as well. So with that, Councilman Carroll.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, A to approve proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of the Clarkston Community Center, A to approve ordinance at section sixty-sixty-sixty-two to establish a fee in lieu of saddle construction program, A to approve the Clarkston City Act Plan, A to approve the official acceptance of the rest of John Gagné from the Down Town of an Authority, A to approve the City Council appointment of Attorney to continue the position of Ethics Hearing Officer, A to approve resolution authorizing the order of contract site engineering, the most responsible, but of temporary repairs, Norman Road dam and downstream and bank missile, the amount of sixty-five thousand, the express to A to approve resolution to clear loose weapons and surplus property for the city of Clarkston, A to approve the twenty-twenty-six highly scheduled for the city of Clarkston.
Say it, Kent.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve items A through H as I will not attempt what he just did. All of, and we're going to miss that part. Thank you so much.
The only thing you'll miss, right? Time of the council.
I'll say that. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, since we did have the representative from the community center, can we present the?
Yes, we can. We can, we can present that. And then we can also make sure, as you saw, as part of the consent agenda, we have proclamation for one hundred years of our community center, right? And so we are so excited about that and we have Leslie Dixon here and he will represent. What are you now on the board? Because you.
Vice President.
Vice President, okay, okay. And they are having a grand hoo-ha this Saturday to just let you know the transformation from it being an actual school to being a community centric area and so we just want to say thank you for that. So with that, all in favor of the procl, all A through H, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passed and so what I want to do for, since we're here, I'm going to take a little personal privilege if you want to pass that to me and I'll go ahead and.
It's just for reading. Oh, you want me to read it?
Okay, I'll have to put my glasses on.
She don't want me to read it?
No, 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 no. We want to understand it. Okay. So honoring the one hundredth anniversary of the Clarkston Community Center, whereas the Clarkston Community Center is not just a building, but the heart of the social connection and cultural expression in our city, a vibrant hub where the arts, culture and community come together, whereas since opening its, okay, since opening its doors in nineteen ninety-one, the center has expanded its reach and now proudly serves more than sixty thousand people each year, providing a welcoming space that brings together long-term residents and newcomers alike, fostering unity within one of the most diverse cities in, most of the diverse cities in America. And whereas for three decades, the Clarkston Community Center has been a beacon of hope and strength, bringing together diverse voices and empowering over sixty thousand individuals annually from more than fifty-seven countries, enriching our shared experience through art, education and collaboration. And whereas with fifty-three percent of Clarkston's population being foreign-born and more than half living in poverty, the Clarkston Community Center provides essential programs and services that uplift and empower individuals through access to education, art, culture and community resources. And whereas the community center diverse offerings include after-school programs, summer camps, English as a second language classes, aesthetic dance Atlanta, martial arts, Vietnamese games and more, continue to enrich the lives of residents of all ages and backgrounds. And whereas the Clarkston Community Center dedication to promoting health, wellness and long-term learning is demonstrated through its senior chai tea classes, senior technology courses, monthly art programs and workforce development initiatives that open doors to new opportunities for all. And whereas in twenty-twenty-five, the Clarkston Community Center proudly celebrates its one hundredth anniversary, marking a century of connection, creativity and community service, honoring its past, celebrating its present and envisioning a bright future for generations to come. And whereas the city of Clarkston will join the Clarkston Community Center on November eighth, twenty-twenty-five for a milestone celebration featuring a curated exhibit in partnership with the Atlanta History Center, storytelling and special events that reflect our shared values of inclusive resilience and hope. Now therefore be it resolved, Beverly H. Burks, Mayor of the City of Clarkston, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim November eighth, twenty-twenty-five as Clarkston Community Center Day in the city of Clarkston and encourage all residents to join in celebrating this remarkable institution that continues to connect, support and inspire our community. And I think that's it, so. Thank you. And we'll have it all fancy for the eighth, okay? But we wanted to make sure since you were here, that we have enjoyed partnership and we have enjoyed everything in terms of what you continue to do for our residents and for our community. With that, we will now move into nine A, which is to discuss the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six operating and enterprise budgets and that will be done by our city manager, Ms. Miller Thornton.
Yes, ma'am. You do have the most recent version of the budget document at your chairs. I also provided to you the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget considerations memorandum. The memorandum includes considerations, questions, inquiries as have been presented by the body over the last week or so. I wanted to compile those in one place. So a balanced budget, general fund budget in the amount of ten million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars has been presented to the council. An estimated one hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred four dollars in general fund reserve balance is, well, actually thirty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars in general fund reserve balance is necessary to balance the fund. On the front page of the memorandum is, is a summary of revenue and expenditure, collections and encumbrances, expected encumbrances for the twenty-twenty-six year. On page two are the considerations that have been presented or questions that have been presented by the body. For council department eleven-ten, the question was, why did the retirement expense go down from ten thousand, eight hundred to ten thousand, four hundred forty? So at presentation of the proposal, we anticipated a fourteen-point-five percent of payroll as the retirement expense. Since then, we have reviewed the actuarial plan from our, from the Georgia Municipal Benefits Plan document and the percentage of payroll that is recommended is actually fifteen-point-one-five percent. And that changes based on a couple of different scenarios, change in employee population, the change in, maybe the change in the amount of payroll evaluated, a change in the average number of years served for employees, all of those things can factor into that percentage change. And so with the valuation report at fifteen-point-one-five percent of payroll, there will need to be an amendment to the proposal in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred eighty dollars. That will be in addition to the expenditure side of the budget and we are recommending that general fund reserve balance be allocated to offset that increase. For the mayor, department thirteen-ten, a proposed consideration was presented to, let me back up a little bit. One of the reasons why I'm presenting these proposals and suggestions is because I will need council consent as to whether to make the changes to the budget draft. Okay. A proposed consideration was presented to remove funding for membership and dues for the position of mayor. So I would need the consent of council, majority consent of council to keep membership dues and fees in the budget for the position of mayor.
I need to answer that. I want to explain that, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
What, to do what? Whether or not council gives consent to keep those in the, you all can deliberate that.
I mean, my one suggestion is, is that we just make it equal for the mayor and council that I think if we move it for the mayor, it may make sense to move it for the council as well.
Council doesn't have membership dues.
Well, do they not have travel and other things, so?
No, the travel and, travel and everything is separate.
So for example, I'm a member of the African-American Mayor's Association and I'm a member of the US Conference of Mayors.
Oh, that's what you mean by membership?
Right, that, that's, that.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, that's it. Two dues. And I will make a point that the African-American Mayor's Association is one of the reasons, one of the institutions that has presented, has given the city the ability to hold the home buying cohort.
As well as providing legal assistance with the issues that we've had with ICE and some of the other things in terms of issues they give us on Fridays, if we want to have any type of meeting about anything, they will meet with us and they're actually going to meet with us about home options in terms of affordability and home issues, so that's it.
Well, I think we should keep it. The criterias of the mayor and criterias of council are totally different. We move in totally different directions. We don't have dues. If we get on somebody's board, I paid my own dues. I pay a thousand dollars a year to be on the Y, out of my pocket. So I don't have a problem with the mayor's dues being paid because they have different guidelines, they have to follow, different things they have to do, different places they have to go and they bring back a lot of positive resources. So I don't have a problem with it. And how much is it?
I mean, we've been doing it, yeah. We've been doing it a couple of years now.
If it's not broke, don't try to fix it.
So my proposal is, this is three thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars, that's in question. Is there any way for, so that people do not have to pay their own dues? Is there any, is there a recommendation to give that to other folks? I mean, I'm on other boards, as y'all know, and it brings back other resources to the city, but I pay those dues out of my pocket, but I mean, I'm okay either way, but I think if we're talking about equity, that'd have to be something because none of the rest of us pay out the dues amount.
Well, this year, we all got, council got a thousand dollars for initiatives. Do you want to pay some dues with that thousand dollars? It's more than what we had last year.
I think that's, everybody got it, right? Yeah.
Excuse me, can you point out where that list is so that we can see what we're talking about?
It's the same list that's been there for the last two years.
So mayor's budget begins on page twenty-four. The summary is on page twenty-four and the detail is on page twenty-five. Line item one hundred, thirteen-ten, fifty-two, thirty-six-hundred.
So I think I would be in favor of kind of keeping it equitable. I mean, you know, our thousand dollars isn't, I don't believe that's necessarily been talked about as something that we would pay personal membership dues for. I think the idea is for that to be used towards community initiatives. So, you know, you want to host a community meeting or, you know, work for a particular nonprofit or something like that, that would make sense. But I think we, you know, to both Councilwoman Bell and the vice mayor's point, y'all are already paying membership dues. So I think I would, I would be more in favor of moving it to where it's a little bit even, especially since we're cutting funding from everywhere else. We already allocate additional amount, money for the mayor's travel and education that's more than the council receives, so would you be okay with that?
I'll be okay with the way, the way it is. That's the way I am. That's the way I want it and that's the way I'll let you vote on it. It has been in there for the last two years, so you either vote it up or vote it down and that's the way I want to make sure we deal with it.
Can we get, can we get specific about what we're talking about?
So I get, I pay membership dues, just like the city manager pays dues.
Right, but is it, are we talking six thousand dollars? No, that's.
No, ma'am, it's three thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars, one thousand dollars to the African-American Mayor's Association and two thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars to the United States Conference of Mayors.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And to clarify, that's in addition to twelve thousand dollars combined for travel, education and training. And then I believe we're also adding a thousand dollars for special initiatives like the rest of the council has.
Thank you for pointing that out and then when we get ready to vote on the budget, you can do whatever you need to do.
I don't.
No, no, it's fine. That's, that's fine. Whatever, whatever the council wants to do.
Can you say one more thing? So it does look like we are dipping into the general fund for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I think it's worth kind of thinking about, even though these are small ball items, thinking about where we can try to save money to reduce the amount that we have to dip into the general fund to balance the budget.
Well, right now, we're at about forty-two thousand dollars in general fund. We've had some additional cuts to the budget. I have that in the, in the summary that you have, yes.
Can you, can you give us an exact number of how much? Well, I want to hear it because people are talking about stuff that I can't find right here.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've had two, we've had a council member said it's a hundred and forty-five thousand and then we've had the city manager correct her, him, and so I'd like to know the number.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to do that.
I was just looking at the purple.
All right. If you look at page eleven, please. Are we there? Okay, total general fund revenue is expected at ten million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars. Of that, ten million plus, nine-point-seven million is derived from taxes, licenses, intergovernmental fees, charges for services, fines and fees and so on. Six hundred, five thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars is expected to be a transfer from the ARPA fund, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. One hundred thirty-one thousand, twenty-seven dollars is, is the expectation of transfer from the Stormwater Fund and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars is what was proposed, presently proposed for, from fund balance. There's all, yes, ma'am.
Our document says one forty-five, at least the one I have. So maybe you have a different version?
No, that shouldn't be there in there.
Okay. This is what, this is what was given to me.
Today?
Today, yeah. The one that was put on my stack today.
Which one do you got?
This, right here, the.
Well, maybe I got you one.
Okay.
That's exactly the one.
Well, this is, sorry.
That's okay.
This was put on. This was put on my stack, and someone grabbed it, I guess.
Yeah, that was from, yeah, last meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right. She does, she has a new one. I gave everybody a new one. Okay.
So what is it that you need at this point? What, what do you want us to do? Vote? What, what do you want?
Okay.
What, what would you like?
So whenever recommendations are made by any member of council, I need consent, consent of the body to move forward the changes in the draft, right? If you all want to hold it until adoption, that's fine too, but when we consider adoption, we're considering the budget as a whole, right? It's departmental and line item detail that I need to formulate the draft as a whole.
Are these, I'm sorry, are these individual requests or majority requests?
That's what.
You've heard from several of us.
Right. So I get direction from a majority of the body, but the majority of the body is only, only in, in public forum.
Right.
Right? And so I have to get consent even on a, even on a one-person request.
Okay. I got you.
Yes, ma'am.
So what are we doing, Stephen? Somebody?
Are we just voting, or what are we doing?
Well, we're not.
Yeah, so I think what the city manager was explaining is that you could, at the meeting when you're going to adopt the budget, make a motion to adopt a budget with this change or that change, and that's a little bit unwieldy.
Right.
So she has proposed a draft budget that you have in front of you, and what she's asking for is your, what's essentially a, a count of hands here on whether you do or do not want the draft budget that she ultimately presents to include the funding for the mayor's expenses that we've discussed.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion, or do, what do we?
I think that's the best, the clearest way to get to it, but, you know, we've talked about, I, I would just suggest that the motion, so that we're all clear, be either to include those or not to include those.
I have a question on that topic, Stephen. Seeing that we, we're not new here, we pretty much see how this thing is going to go. So will the mayor recuse herself since this is her, her dues? If she have to break a tie? How does that work?
Interesting question. I, I think the answer is no, the mayor would not be required to do that because it's not, you know, if, if it was for her personal benefit, it shouldn't be happening anyway. It's in there because it, if it's included, it's because the council has deemed that that provides a benefit to the city, the community, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to keep funding the membership and dues for the position of the mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved, and second that we keep membership and expenses and funds for the mayor. Is there any further discussion?
I have a couple more points to make on this.
Sure.
So I think just a couple things. Some of the, the services that we're getting from these two memberships, we do already have access to those through our contacts at GMA. There's other, you know, lobbying groups and immigrant rights groups can help inform things on ICE, and actually give legal, legal advice. There's case law briefings that they provide. Would you consider getting an, maybe reducing this to, say, a thousand dollar allocation to help offset membership and dues, again, to a point on trying to reduce the impact of the general fund?
No.
Okay. I'd like to amend the motion then, put it to a formal vote, to remove the two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollar membership to the United States Conference of Mayors, and change the membership dues to the African American Mayor's Association to a thousand dollars allocation towards any membership dues that the mayor would like to choose. Can I get a second?
Is there a second? I'll, I'll take care of that for you. Don't worry about that, Councilmember Perkins. Can we get a second?
When you say take care of it, what do you, what do you mean?
He made a motion. You, you can.
Point of personal preference to you, I'm, I'm getting the impression that you're taking this very personally, instead of as more of an objective.
Oh, no, I'm just, I, I am literally going through the process of, you have a point, our city manager brought up something, she's trying to take care of the budget. It was brought up. I was asked what, how I felt about it. I told you how I felt about it. Now we have a motion on the floor. You have the opportunity to make your amendment to the motion, and we're going to keep, keep it going with the meeting. So at this time, we need to have a second for your amended, amendment to the motion.
Can, can you repeat the motion, please?
So my motion is to, to remove the allocate, the two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the United States Conference of Mayors line item, and then change the thousand dollars to the African American Mayor's Association to be a thousand dollars towards membership dues, to be used at the discretion of the mayor. So it kind of opens it up. You can use it to offset membership costs as you see fit.
I'll take a second. Take a second. Take a second. No second, then the amendment is dropped to the motion. So we have the main motion. Any other discussion? You ready for the question?
Well, before, so before the question, take the question, whose suggestion was it to remove? Maybe I missed that because I was.
I don't know who suggested to remove it. Whoever suggested to remove it, you know? All I got was a notice from the city manager that she has someone to recommend that, to remove the dues, and I'm just trying to make sure that we proceed in an orderly manner with the meeting.
Well, I think, oh, let's proceed.
Go right ahead, YT.
No, I think that, oh, oh, you won't got to worry about that. So I think that the, the city manager had a budget meeting with all of us. Is that correct? So I think throughout that budget meeting, as we thought, as we thought, as we looked at the deficit that we are in as a city, I think there were line items that we went through to kind of identify, was that necessarily now to find a balanced budget?
Okay. Any other discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor to keep the city, the mayor's budget as is in terms of the expenses and the membership? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions?
Did you vote?
I said aye, sir.
You said, you said aye?
I said aye.
Okay.
Motion passed. So you have your, your next. Okay. City Manager. Keep going, we got you.
Um, the question was presented about travel, training, education, and kind of equalizing that across the board for mayor and council. Right now, travel, okay, travel and education is five thousand dollars collectively for each member of council, and it is, education, twelve thousand dollars for mayor. So would you want me to, would you all want me to have twelve thousand dollar allocation for each member of council as well? Or twelve thousand dollars across the council budget?
Across the council, that's it.
Can you point out where that information is?
Yes, ma'am. Page twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three for council, and twenty-four, twenty-five for mayor.
Thank you.
On page twenty-two, you'll see in the council detail, council travel and council education are separated line items for each council member. Two hundred fifty thou, two thousand five hundred dollars each for council for travel and two hundred, two thousand five hundred dollars each for travel and training, for training and education for council.
I have a suggestion in this one that I think it may make sense to reduce these numbers, except for the new members that have to go to the required training, but I think we can reduce them for the existing mayor and council that don't have to go to the training, because then that would lead to substantial savings there. I understand the new members have to do the mandatory training in the first year, but the other ones don't.
Any suggestion about the reduction?
Well, so it's, right now, it's twelve thousand for the mayor, is that right?
Yes.
Six thousand each, and then it's five thousand for the council. So I think maybe we could say, sorry, did you have something?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. So I was thinking maybe we could just cut that in half and say, you know, three thou, six thousand for the mayor, and then twenty-five hundred for each of the, for, for each of the council members, and that to include both travel and education training. I think that twenty-five hundred is more than enough to cover the initial training for the new members, from my memory.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So you're saying after newly-elect training, that nobody goes to training?
No, no, just that you can only, instead of having five thousand for education, training, and travel, you have twenty-five hundred for education, training, and travel.
Coming from somebody that haven't been anywhere to get any training, that doesn't quite cut it. You can't do but one thing a year, really.
Well, you could do one, you could do one event on twenty-five hundred.
Right, just one.
Right.
Out of many.
It depends how many you want to, you want to go to. There are Zoom events that I go to sometimes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, I'm confused. I thought all we had was twenty-five hundred.
You have twenty-five hundred for training and then twenty-five hundred for travel.
Oh, oh, you're saying.
So I was combining those two.
Oh, y'all combined it.
Yeah, so it's five thousand total. So I was suggesting that we make that just twenty-five hundred each instead of five thousand each. And if you did that, if you did that, that would be, you know, fifteen thousand in savings for the council, and then another six thousand in savings for the mayor. So that'd be twenty-one thousand in savings. That would, more than half what we have to spend in the general fund, from the, from the fund balance.
I've got a quick question, City Manager, on, can you refresh my memory on what this is currently?
Yes.
What was your question? So I want to make sure everyone hears.
Yeah, currently, council travel is fifteen thousand dollars for the full of councils, so that's six members.
Twenty-five hundred, please.
Twenty-five hundred each.
That's what it currently is.
And then council education and training is fifteen thousand dollars for all six members.
So we're increasing it by, well, we're actually keeping it the same, though?
Well, I would say that, basically, you make it, instead of you get five thousand each, you get, because you combine those two, you get twenty-five hundred each for your education and your training.
I don't think that's fair for them because, because the other piece is, you know, we have a lot of council members who really utilize that training, and they bring it back to the community, and so. Yes, Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, I got a question. I guess it's for Tamika. Is this inclusive of our GMA, or exclusive, this, this is subtracted from this amount, right?
It's charged to this amount.
Oh, this code?
Yeah. Yeah, so every time, if you go down to Savannah, if you go to Cities United, all of those have to be deducted from your budget, and as many, over the last couple of years, we've had several council members who have not participated in those programs, and it has allowed others to truly be able to get the education, because there's a base rate when you go to GMA. But anytime you take a class, particularly if you take those classes that are six hours long, there are additional charges. So you have the base rate, but it can be sometimes almost two thousand dollars or fifteen hundred, depending on the classes that you take. So I just want to make sure as people are thinking about the reduction of that, they are thinking about, they're also reducing their way of being able to contribute to the city, and it shouldn't be a matter of you using your other organizations to do that when you're doing it for the betterment of the city. We have GMA, but it costs to be a part of GMA, and it costs to participate in the training. So I want to make sure as people are thinking about the reductions, you're also thinking about what that also does in terms of the return on investment for the community as well.
I guess my question is, Tamika, and I guess this would be a question for you. On average, do you, do you have trends and patterns of our expense, our expenditures for the travel and education for this body? Can you give me the average?
It's in the past budget, I think.
We can look it up and provide.
Yeah. But again, we've also, and, and to that point, we've had several council members who have not attended, and that has allowed many of the council members to utilize from that money to be able to provide that or get those trainings, and so.
You could still do that with this.
And thank you for bringing that up, especially since you're leaving, too.
Right. I won't be here, so, but I, I still am concerned about the general fund balance, using it two years in a row. That is concerning to me.
It is, and we had the chance when we were doing the mileage rate to make that difference, too. So what are we going to do with this? So do you need us to make a motion? Do you, what do you, what would you like for us to do? Because I want to make sure you have multiple things that you would like to address, and this is just one of many. So how would you like to proceed with this?
Since Councilmember Bell wants, wants to see trends for use, we can, I mean, we have another public here on this next, at the work session, so.
Okay. We can do that.
I'll be open to that. I'll be open to a reduction, but I think to the points have been made, especially for our newly-elected folks coming on, there is a lot of value that can be had from attending those events, not just in the training, but just networking, attending panels, listening to other folks who are trying to solve similar problems in their communities, and it is a valuable thing to bring back. So I think we could look at the average, see if there's ways to cut cost. Savannah, unfortunately, is very expensive, so even when you go on the cheap, it's, it still costs some stuff, but, yeah, so I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Is there anything else in terms of adjustments that you'd like to make or recommend or had recommendations?
Um, the majority, everything else is really questions. I did present the special events, community action projects budget by event, and so if there are any additions or corrections to that, I would like to hear from the council. And additionally, there has been some consideration proposed to remove CARES grant funding of one hundred thousand dollars in food distribution funding pending the establishment of and implementation of policy around those different events. Repeat that again? Yes, ma'am. So there's a consideration that has been presented to remove CARES grant funding of a hundred thousand dollars and food distribution funding of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from the fiscal year 2026 budget, but pending establishment and implementation of policy around those two events. Like, right now, it has been presented that the CARES grant is compliant-heavy, right, and reducing some of, some of that red tape, I guess, to the application, otherwise striking the funding. And then food distribution funding, there, I mean, there's also a desire to see policy around, around that as well.
Okay. Correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. That money has to be spent by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. And so we have now until January to do any type of policy as relates to that, additional policy? Because I'm trying to understand what kind of policy, other than getting a zip code and finding out some things in terms of who is getting the food, do we need to add to it? And you don't have to necessarily answer that.
Yes, ma'am.
But the issue is, we have a deadline to spend this money. December thirty-first.
Of next, of twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, next year. Both funds. So CARES with some. So CARES was something that we kind of let the administration address in terms of policy, protocols, everything like that. I would think that we would then allow you, if there was some need to make adjustments based on what you've seen in terms of the current recipients, to be able to handle that. You could do that internally, but I'm still trying to see in terms of food. We just talked about nobody's getting food. So why are we talking about not giving them food?
Well, maybe, maybe it wasn't about not giving food, it was about the parameters around the program. I will make a point that our current contract for food distribution had an expiration date of December 31 of '25, right? And so because the federal treasury requires the monies to be obligated, if contractually the monies had to be obligated within that contract by December 31 of '24. So technically, we can't enter into another contract for food distributions with ARPA funding. So we need to, I guess, reinvent the program in a way where we are legally able by treasury guidance, we're compliant by treasury guidance to spend those monies. What I presented to Councilmember Johnson, Vice Mayor Johnson, was that the city becomes the vendor instead of the grocer, being the vendor.
Okay.
Well, I guess my only question around the CARES money, I thought we already removed, we've cut the deadline for people to apply, right? And they've already, we were at the process of awarding them for...
Yeah, for 2025.
This is '26.
We're talking about '26.
I was confused by that, too, but the awards now for the '25 budget.
Yeah. So we can still expend the monies, we just don't necessarily have to expend them through a CARES program. The monies could be transferred to the general fund for general operations and maintenance. That is a, an eligible expense under the, under the, under ARPA guidelines. So it's, it's really just about whether to keep the, yeah, the line item for CARES within ARPA or to expend the monies in some other way.
I just have one question.
Yes.
On this community action project, the special events list, Juneteenth went from $5,000 to $15,000 in 365 days. I don't understand.
Well, this was the same budget that was presented in '25. Aside from, yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's the only thing I noticed on this page, was that that tripled.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can get the, the actual cost we spent this year.
Because if we spend less than that, it would just go back to the general fund, so...
Can we compare that to the other two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
So real quick, back to the CARES and the food distribution question. On the, on the CARES grant funding, you're mentioning it being compliant-driven versus...
Impact.
Impact. And I know I've raised some questions about this. I think, you know, if we were to move forward with it, one of the things I personally would like to see is that a lot of our measurement and evaluation be driven by moving the needle forward, to put it metaphorically, on things that are preventing our community from upward economic mobility, you know, addressing literacy, things like that, where we're looking, we're able to measure community transformation a little bit more versus, hey, did, you know, making sure that all the receipts are turned in and things like that. I think that's important, but given the amount, you know, we don't want to have $400,000, you know, worth of administrative work for a $10,000 grant. And I've, I've worked on some $400,000 grants and the compliance is there, but a lot of it's more impact-driven, tracking, making sure that the people who are receiving help are, you know, the folks that need it, and then actually track, tracking growth as well. And I'm happy to help kind of connect resources and staff if y'all, you know, want. I know I've shared a little bit, but, you know, we can get in the weeds some on that, just some, some other models out there. And related to the city, on the, one other piece of the CARES grant funding as well, I think I would also be interested in exploring the idea of turning it, adding a match grant component to it, just to expand our dollars a little bit. And so when we have folks applying to say, hey, listen, you know, we want you to contribute, you know, it doesn't even have to be, you know, equal, you know, 100%, 100%. It could be saying, hey, look, we want you to contribute 25% of the $10,000 just to make sure that program, you know, again, we're investing in the community. And so just, we're, we're kind of using it as a mechanism for partnership around critical issues that our community is facing. I was going to move on to the food, but if anybody wants to jump in on the CARES thing, go for it.
Well, I was just going to ask this question, and y'all let me know what y'all think. For the CARES program, right, could we just add a mechanism of evaluation to illustrate the impact of our dollars? That way it doesn't slow down filling in this gap where we know some of these nonprofits are losing funding or don't have access to resources and then just proceed forward? I mean, we won't have a baseline because we didn't do it the first year, but we will do, we will have some quantitative data that we can collect to indicate if this impacts anything. And then maybe that'll help us with future policies, because then from there, we'll have data to influence why we should have a policy, our process moving forward, and how we should execute on that.
So, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I, I would like, first of all, to make sure that we protect this money. And so what do we need to do in order to make sure that we stay within the federal guidelines for when the money either needs to be expended or allocated? Can you go over that again, please?
Yes, ma'am. I think we're, we're in good shape as far as allocation of the funding based on what you all decided at the end of last year, right? So right now, there is, we expect that there, at the end of this year, there will be about $602,000 in ARPA fund remaining, right? And so because you all established the CARES plan, CARES grant program, we can continue in that and paying those monies toward that program. I think we're fine as far as allocation goes. The budget, adopting the budget with this transfer from ARPA to the general fund solidifies the obligation.
And then from there, it can be allocated to CARES grant?
That's correct.
All right. And can you speak to that relative to the food distribution?
Yes, ma'am. The food distribution is a little bit different. Last year, you all adopted a resolution, a contractual relationship with Foodtown, right? The terms of that agreement said that the agreement would expire December 31 of '25. So we are without, we are outside of our deadline now to contractually renew that agreement, right? So we have to look at, we can't enter into another contract to expend those monies. We have to find another way to expend it if we're going to do food distributions.
And would that be putting it in the administrative budget? And then, again, if it's funded by ARPA, would it be the same thing? We put it in the administrative budget and then...
We adopt it as presented as a transfer to the general fund.
Okay.
And manage it through the general fund.
Yes. I would recommend that we just do that and work out the particulars later.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Is that consensus from everyone in terms of dealing with the food?
Yeah, yeah, I definitely think we should move to the general fund, only because of some of the retractions of funds disseminated across the country because of the federal funds, because of the linkage of the money.
So, so we're good as far as the food? Are we good with, with the CARES and allowing the city manager to make the necessary adjustments in terms of the compliance and any type of enhancements in terms of evaluation?
I did have one other question on CARES. It did look like it was reduced somewhere in the budget to 75,000?
Yeah, so $75,000 is the ARPA allocation and then $25,000 is subsidized already in the general fund.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes.
I'm just thinking about risk and protection of the funds. It may make more sense, y'all, to move it back to general and like not have it specified from the, I mean, they could audit our budget right now and it says like we're helping to fill in a gap that others may be against.
Well, the purpose, and I think you're right. So what I did was, I did establish a true SPOSS fund budget, right? I only showed the transfer from SPOSS to general fund. So at the top of the year, those monies will be transferred to the general fund and every expenditure within SPOSS is accounted for in the general fund budget. So it's coming, it's being derived from general fund activity.
Last question. Because I'm just thinking about risk and Stephen jumping here at any given time. Because these, this information is public knowledge and it's already on interwebs or wherever else and it illustrates what we actually assigned it to, and then we got history from the past, how, how is that going to affect us? Because I'm just worried about audits that are happening from the federal government on certain cities about how they're utilizing federal funds for things that this administration, quite frankly, does not want to occur. And how do we keep that and protect the resources that we have so that we can continue to fill in the gaps in our communities?
I have an idea.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to refer you to Ms. Miller Thornton, because she has a finance background and knowledge that I do not.
I asked you, Stephen, because legally, I want to make sure that I'm not saying anything. If it's illegal, unethical.
Right. I would just say this quickly for the legal perspective. Document each step.
Exactly. So if we're worried about protections, right, we've already obligated this money across programs, right? We just can't enter into any more contractual obligations, right? And so if we're worried about protecting, just say we want to make sure as of tomorrow, ARPA funds are protected and they can't be retracted by the federal government or the treasury. At the November 25th work session, we can present a, a budget amendment for '25 that transfers remaining ARPA funds to the general fund, period. Because every expense that we will subsidize with that money is an eligible expense under the treasury.
What do you think?
And when we report to ARPA at the end of '25, we will report that those monies are expended for these programs.
Okay. I think that is the solution to go with? Is that consensus with the council? Council's consensus with the council? Yes, okay. All right. Anything else? That's it. Thank you so much. That was for discussion purposes only and you got your motions and your to-do items, so thank you so much.
Sorry. On the community action projects, are we going to go through those or, I thought we were just on planning and development one.
She just outlined what she wanted to talk to us about.
I'm sorry?
The community action projects were item two on that. We covered the item one, which is the ARPA and the CARES, but then there's a whole list of...
Right. The only question I, that was presented for community action projects was, was just now from Ms. Councilmember Johnson, I mean Vice Mayor Johnson, about the comparison in Juneteenth expenditures over the previous years.
Okay.
So if you have some, something additional.
Yeah, I just had a question on the International Rice Festival and then the, I think Culture Fest. Are we...
So I even have to get some information on the Culture Fest. It was, it was included in the last year's budget, but I didn't have detail or history on it, right?
I don't think it's happened in the last two years.
It hadn't happened and what happened was with the Rice Festival, it was also included in the budget last year. And so because we had everything else going on, we moved it to next year.
That's correct.
What is the Rice Festival?
So the Rice Festival, thank you for asking. The Rice Festival is a culmination of what we know about Clarkston. We have, every continent, every count, every country has a unique rice dish. And so it was a way to showcase our community, the diversity of our community, and the diversity of food. And so we actually have that and we're going to make sure in terms of sponsors to offset many of the costs with that. And we have partners and other things that are involved with it.
Okay. Do you want to combine that maybe with Culture Fest? Because it sounds real similar to what Culture Fest is doing this one.
I don't think Culture Fest isn't happening on a $2,000 budget. You remember, they couldn't produce or whatever, so that's just...
Well, we better keep it in there, though, if we don't want no tax, baby.
It can go.
Because they don't come for your chug, love.
So we, we have a footnote for, for the Culture Fest, if that, that helps you.
We'll think around how to make that happen.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
All the rest of the questions have been responded to in the memorandum. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to item 9B, which is to consider a proclamation designated in November as Native American Heritage Month. And that is Ms. McKee.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. So the Native American Heritage Month. Indigenous is a broader term, meaning original inhabitants of land, while Native American specifically refers to the indigenous people of America. So the primary state entity for Native American heritage in Georgia is the Georgia Council on American Indian Concerns, which works to protect cultural heritage and advise the government for public education and interpretation. There also are numerous sites, like the Etowah Indian Mountain and Omoggi Mounds National Park, for visitors to explore. There is a folk heritage center. It is located in Reinhardt University, and this is the state official frontier and Southern Indian interpretive center and a national park service for the Trail of Tears interpretation. We have the Atlanta History Center, features a permanent exhibit on Native and Indigenous people. There is the Native American Heritage Tour, a self-guided tour focusing on the heritage of Native Americans in the state. The state-recognized tribe here in Georgia is the Georgia Tribe of Eastern Cherokee, descendants of Cherokee who escaped the Trail of Tears in 1830. There is the Cherokee of Georgia Tribal Council, recognized by the state in 1988 and operates traditional Cherokee culture program. The Lower Muskogee Creek tribes, a remnant of the original Muskogee Creek Confederacy. Historical tribes, the primary tribes historically from Georgia were the Cherokee and the Creek Nation. They were forced out of their ancestral lands during the 19th century due to the demand for land for cotton and the discovery of gold.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, any more questions about the proclamation? Councilman Perkins?
Thank you for adding some additional detail to it. I think for our conversation at our work session, just to add some local context, I believe we're on Muskogee land. There is south, I forget the exact trail or creek, but thank you for adding additional history to it.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I got a motion.
Yes.
I, I move that we can, that we approve of, we move on a proclamation designated in November as Native American Heritage Month.
Second. It's been properly moved and second, that we approve a proclamation designated in November as Native American Heritage Month. Is there any discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Thank you very much. We'll now move to the considering alcohol license application for delivery services at GB License LLC DBA Go Puff, located at 808 Park North Boulevard, Clarkston, Georgia, 30021. And we have Clerk Mitchell to discuss.
All right. The Alcohol Review Committee received and reviewed an alcohol license, a renewal application for GB License LLC DBA Go Puff for delivery services at 808 Park North Boulevard. The applicant requests approval to continue delivery services of beer, wine, and malt beverages under a new manager. Although this is a renewal application, the change in management requires the city council's approval consistent with the process for a new application. The committee confirmed that the business license has been issued and noted the change The committee confirmed that the business license has been issued and noted the change in management. We also conducted a background check on the new manager, and it revealed, as, as well as the application revealing that there was a reckless driving charge from 2020. Uh, the applicant is available online for comments and questions.
Okay, and I think, um, this was more that we just didn't, we had someone who did not want to add this to the consent agenda at the time. So, uh, Council, did you have any questions on this one? If not, we can, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Have a motion?
Yes.
I move that we, oh, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we got an answer to the reckless driving incident that was reported.
Yeah.
Was that, is that, is it you?
Yes, hi everyone, my name is Elizabeth Mahoney from Sarden Law F. Attorneys, representing GB License LLC. Um, and then Mr. Aniscu is available online as well, but what's your question, if I may?
Who was the mediation behind it? Do you know what caused it? What, what was the response from Go Puff?
Oh, um, from Go Puff, I actually do not know. Um, but he is still employed with Go Puff and is a regional manager with them.
So is it that, let me make sure I'm clear on something. We, the management changed in terms of the renewal, and so this is the new point person for Go Puff. And so it's not so much that he's gonna be doing anything, driving, he's our, our agent more so as we're looking at the license, I just want to make sure, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, um, that is correct. He's the local agent identified on the alcohol license. He's not himself one of the drivers.
But as the representative of an organization with that background or having an incident, was there, where is he? Is he up there?
What, and what is his name? Let's make sure we're clear.
His name's David.
His name is Stephen?
David.
David, Mr. David, we'll, we'll turn, this, it still says the city of Clarkston. Uh, make sure that we unmute you, and we can make sure in terms of... Okay, I see Mr. David, can you? Is it at the top? Look, look up there, it's David. So make him, can you make him bigger? Okay. So what exactly was the question that we had from Mr. David?
Yeah, Mr. David, you're the representative of Go Puff, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so the incident that occurred, um, that they found in the background check, do you want to respond to that or give us any insight?
Well, you know, for what it's worth, I mean, in terms of my employment with Go Puff, it happened prior to that, and, um, you know, I was employed, you know, by the company with it being fully disclosed to them as well, so, um, as far as, um, you know, things are here, everything is fully disclosed, and, um, you know, I don't believe that this is something that would be, um, you know, reflective of this business and the fact that I don't have any, um, I'm not a driver, um, I've done extensive alcohol training, um, across the United States and multiple retailers, um, both, um, from a festival standpoint, customer interaction standpoint, and have never had any issues, um, when it came to anything regarding that. This was, um, you know, an issue on my end, and, um, you know, it was fully disclosed, um, to my company as well as on the application.
And what's Go Puff's policy for the drivers that you do have, that you oversee?
The Go Puff policy is that every driver has to undergo, um, a certification is outlined by the Department of Revenue to make sure that they meet the guidelines for alcohol delivery, um, in terms of our actual delivery process. Um, it entails, everybody has their, their cell phone, obviously, and all the, um, the orders go through their cell phones, so upon delivery, they are required to, um, get a valid driver's license, um, from that individual, scan it, um, via the app, and, but via the app, um, algorithms. If it is not deemed to number one, um, be a valid license, and number two, not be that person, so obviously our driver's checking the, the individual, um, standing at the door against the picture on the license, um, they do not get it. Um, and I, I can be the first one to tell you, there's multiple instances, whether it be alcohol or tobacco, where we actually have deliveries that are brought back to our facility, um, you know, based on the fact that the, uh, the, the customer did not meet the criteria by having a valid driver's license, or possibly being somebody else that wasn't, um, the ordering person in the first place.
So, uh, just to make sure to be clear, were you asking about how they engage with the consumer, or were you asking in terms of the actual driver, in terms of them having to do the background check, making sure in terms of passing the class, and having a valid driver's license, I think?
The latter.
That part. So did I miss any points as it related to that, Mr. David, in terms of what is expected in terms of your drivers, when you employ them, to go out to the public, that they must have a valid driver's license, pass the test, and go through a background, um, check?
Yes, ma'am, and I think in addition to that, if there was to be anything that we find that really didn't follow protocol, um, they are automatically taken off of our, our system, so they can actually still deliver, um, regular goods, you know, your, your bread and milk, but they're never allowed to, um, again, deliver any kind of age-restricted items.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if, if there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve an alcohol license application for delivery services at GB License LLC DBA Go Puff, located at 808 Port Park North Boulevard, Clarkston, Georgia 30021.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve an alcohol license application for delivery services at GB License LLC DBA Go Puff, located at 808 Park North Boulevard, Clarkston, Georgia 30021. Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Yes, abstentions.
One abstention, okay, thank you, it passed, thank you very much.
You have a good evening.
Right, have a good evening. We'll move on to F, which is to consider a res...
We were just questioning whether we have to have a reason for abstention, but it may not be the case, this is not zoning.
You don't.
You don't?
I, I'm, I'm not aware of a legal requirement to explain.
Right, okay. To consider a resolution authorizing an emergency contract for the Forty Oaks Structure Encapsulation Project to be funded through Splos II. Mr. Marcus, Seaton.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Forty Oaks, uh, we put out a bid for the structure encapsulation. Several weeks ago, we, uh, as you know, the structure is damaged, it's old, so, uh, it needs to be enclosed, and we're also dealing with a delicate situation, because we have asbestos, so you have to be very delicate. And we got a, uh, bid, we got two bids, uh, they, what they're gonna do is encapsulate, they're gonna use tarp, they can't do the side because that would further expose asbestos, so we want to be careful. Uh, the tarp that they're gonna use is 20 mil. It's vinyl tarp, it's, uh, fire-resistant, water-resistant, uh, it's, uh, it's gonna protect the, the fossa and the soft. The two bids, we got back the first being $36,275. The second one was $26,000, the last bid. Uh, also with that, we, uh, with the $26,000, we're just asking for a $30,000 contingency, because you know, with these prices sometimes, it may go over to the $26,000, maybe $26,120, but we just want to make sure that it's covered. And I also brought, uh, the bid that we had in case y'all had any questions. Any, any, uh, questions that you wanted to ask, he's right here too. But this is something that we definitely want to get done before the end of the year. It's gonna be a, uh, 30 days. Once they get the NTP notice to proceed, we'll be done within the 30 days. Anything beyond that point, it's $250, they come.
Okay, thank you. And just a, as a follow-up to that, I know, um, did we have, when we were doing this, did we have, uh, did we confer with the Historic Preservation of Friends of Forty Oaks about this?
What, uh, last week, what was supposed to have been done, reaching out?
But prior to this, we hadn't, right? Okay, okay. With that, City Manager?
Yes, ma'am, I was just going to say, um, and I believe the reason, one of the reasons why we didn't reach out to the entities is because the sole, I mean, the sole premise of presenting this was to, just to preserve what's there until a decision is made or a plan is put forward. Um, I know that there has been several different versions of where council stands, where Forty Oaks stands, where the, um, HPC may stand on, um, preservation of the building or use of the land, and so it is my opinion that if council, um, does not want to move forward or does not move forward with encapsulation of the building, then sooner rather than later, there needs to be a joint session of these bodies to kind of figure out what's next, so that, um, the administration and public works and engineering are clear on what the direction is for the property.
I think the main thing was, what we was trying to do is, we wasn't trying to make a quick decision, but what we was trying to do is preserve what we have and still allow the bodies time.
No, you cannot, yeah, we can't hear.
Yeah, okay, we'll get him. So, Mr. Seaton, talk a little louder, I know you were trying to make sure you were...
What I was saying was, all this was doing was delaying the time until everyone can come up with a concrete decision, but preserving what we have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for that. So with that, do we have a motion on this item?
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to defer this item to the December work session to give...
November.
No.
December.
November, November 30.
There won't be one in December.
December.
There won't be one in, you mean the one, November work session for the December council meeting, is what you mean?
Right, November work session, December council meeting.
Okay.
If we can keep the encapsulation quote that long, to give the entities involved enough time to come together and speak to Marcus and the engineer on what they think they want to do, and I did invite both of them here tonight to, um, let us all know what their plans are, and even with the encapsulation process, why they don't want to do it right now. So if, if FOFO or the Historic Preservation at this time can speak, I would appreciate it. Is that, is that okay with y'all?
Do you, do you need a second?
We need a second, and then we can...
I need a second for the motion.
Okay, all right, it's been, okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded that, um, we do this, and I'm gonna open it up for discussion for the November, defer this to the November work session. And so with that, I will open it up to allow, uh, Friends of Forty Oaks to come up, and we have the Historic Preservation, if you want to. One of the things that came up was about making sure you, you have a plan. Um, and so if you want to just kind of, you know, bring us a little update, and then we can kind of follow up from there, um, so Ms. Lisa, if you want to come up and say a few words?
Hi, good evening, Lisa Williams, Friends of Forty Oaks. Marcus, thank you so much for making an effort to help kind of what we call stop fleeing and, uh, give us a chance to explore opportunities. Um, we have been, uh, working with HPC on trying to find grant opportunities to help restore the interior structure of the home. We've had some studies done by Georgia State University, by New South Associates, and by, um, size more architectural firms over the past, and what was determined was that the home was of a historical significance and eligible for the National Historic, um, Registry. So, uh, I think that even though we might feel a little disjointed in all coming together for a conversation, which I think is needed, is that we all agree that, uh, we need to kind of stop the damage so that we can move forward with, uh, CLG designation, which the Historic Preservation Commission's been working on with the city. So, um, so that, that's really where we're at, is we really need to get the CLG designation accomplished so that we can seek grant funding to restore the home. Um, as a group, Friends of Forty Oaks has been, uh, working with the community to, uh, not only support the HPC in the restoration of the home, so it can be made as a useful space for the community. We've also been working with other organizations, the Georgia Forestry Commission, and local volunteers to remove invasive species and restore the trails. We've got a lot of activities coming up. We have our Walk with Friends this Saturday, which everyone's welcome to join. If you do go to the preserve right now, you would see, uh, some of the work that we've done with Free the Trees groups and the ivy that is actually, it, it looks kind of bad, but it's actually the ivy that is dying and falling off the trees because our volunteers have come out to actually, to remove that ivy and stop strangling the trees. We're clearing trails, we're removing litter, which we'll be doing again this Saturday. Um, and we're also working with, uh, the city, um, and with Michael, who's been very supportive, thank you, on, uh, different other volunteer and educational days coming up, including courthouse builds, and we have, are doing second Saturday workdays every month. So, uh, we understand it's complicated and layered, uh, but we do, uh, support the work that the HPC has done, and we need the city to support the HPC in getting a CLG designation so that we can seek grant funding, and we do need to kind of get the house stabilized, uh, so that we can continue that progress. Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, before you go, I think Councilman Carroll had a question.
So is there any grants that you can get without a CLG designation, or there's nothing? We can't get any grant unless you get a CLG designation?
It's difficult. Um, I think, uh, as a group, Friends of Forty Oaks can get small community grants for some of the events that we're doing. Um, historical grants are a little bit of a different animal, and I think that we do need that CLG designation, that we've been after for a few years now, but we really have to have the city behind us to get that.
Okay, and before we proceed, I'd like, uh, Mr. Edwards to maybe come up and to kind of give us in context, where are we in terms of being able to get that certification? So then that can kind of answer some of the questions, because, you know, if they're a new entity, they're not gonna get a $200,000 grant, um, but we just kind of need to know.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so on that right now, um, we're, we're in the second month of the HPC reviewing the historic, uh, design guidelines that staff has drafted. Uh, we're actively in the process of starting to go out and take pictures. The HPC already had some taken, so examining where we need to go. Um, so a lot of that's just gonna take us finding a professional, uh, who can tell us the historic period, the architectural style, and the significance, because I am not qualified, nor do I necessarily understand that side of architecture. Um, so it's just finding grants to get that done, uh, and most of the grants that I have seen for types of preservation, it does require, um, the CLG designation, or you're looking at $1,000, $2,000, and we could try to bundle up 15 to 20 of those to make a big dent in it, but other than that, I've not seen any big grants for preservation of historic structures like that.
Okay, and were you able to utilize the information that Georgia State provided to help you with that? Because they went through a lot of the architectural information as it related to that building.
Yes, so the CLG requires the Historic Resources Survey, which is examination of all of the historic properties within the city. So if we want to make a historic district of one property, we could, and we could probably use that, but outside of that, we'd need it for the whole historic districts that we're looking at, um, putting together.
Okay, and then the timeline for that? What, what would be, just because if part of what we're saying is that, you know, we need that designation, we need to know how long is the timeline for us to do that, and the funding required to do that is included in the budget, or however, whatever we need to do, because if, there's a lot of moving parts, so can you elaborate on that?
Uh, yes, so my estimate would be about $75,000 for a consultant to come in and do all of it, have the plan, and you're probably looking six to eight months at best, according on my knowledge from looking at the, um, update for Stone Mountains been last year when I was working with him. Or the other option is staff can go out, start taking pictures, and have some of the background information, and it may be less in a shorter time period. We just have to start reaching out to consultants and figure out the best method.
Okay, and I think Councilman Perkins had a question.
So I just want some clarifications.
So I just want some clarifications. So the CLG, you have to have Historic Preservation District in order to get the CLG? Or walk me through just the order of that.
So for the, the CLG for the State Historic Preservation Office, you have to have a historic district, Historic Preservation Design Guidelines, um, and Historic Resources Survey before you qualify.
Okay. And that's, that's where that 75,000 would get us all of?
Would just get you the Historic Resources Survey. Staff has presented the, um, Historic District Guidelines and, uh, planning to have, um, the Historic District Maps for this upcoming meeting this month.
So, so then just getting at the details on this. So total out of pocket for the city to get the CLG for the Forty Oaks House would, just estimate, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire for off by now.
Uh, so it would be for the whole historic district. It wouldn't just be for the Forty Oaks House.
Okay. And that's, and that's that 75,000. And then all the other people, I guess basically what I'm getting to is, the question on the table was when, what grant funding is available? We're looking for a number. How much is this going to cost to restore this to some, something, right? And it's got to be usable. So to get to that point where even, we can even start talking about, about grants, is that $75,000, six to eight months, or is there additional? It sounds like there's additional work and additional money that would be involved just to get us to the point to even start applying for grants.
Yeah. So it'd be $70,000, then we can apply for the CLG, and then you've probably got about a 90-day period there while the state reviews that and gives you the designation. So you're probably looking at a year
Another year.
To 14 months before we could even apply for grants.
Okay. And then is the CLG application, I'm assuming that's not just given out for free. Is there a cost associated with that, or is that again wrapped into that 75,000?
I believe there's a small fee to submit, but I would say probably no more than a couple hundred bucks.
Okay.
After you get past the 75,000.
Okay. So that was my question. Is it 75,000, if you made it literally a one property historic district, would it still be that same 75,000 fee or would it be cheaper then?
If we did it for one property, it would probably be a couple thousand.
Okay. So if we didn't have it for the entire, like make a larger historic district, the cost would be a lot less, is what you're saying?
Right. Any other questions?
I got a, I got a question.
Yes.
So I understand the CLG, right? But that's our commitment as a city to historic preservation. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I guess in regards to the agenda item that's before, so on the Forty Oaks structure, uh, encapsulation project, right, and the decision that we briefly had discussed around 30 days of deferring it, I, I guess my question is, which was my question almost a year, over a little bit of a year ago, we had this discussion and I think y'all gave us a presentation, September 24th, 2024, right? And there was benefits of keeping the, um, the property as it is. There was a request for cost and recommendation. So the recommendation that I'm hearing is that through, on the Historic Preservation Committee, the decision was to focus on the, um, the certified local government, um, certificate. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But, so I guess this is why I'm a little perplexed, right? And I think this is why this is, there is disconnect and perplex around this project as a whole. Like, as a body, I went back and looked at the video, right? There were discussions on there in regards to a plan. It didn't have to be an extensive plan, but want to know why we were keeping it, how much it was going to cost for us to keep it. And then our recommendations that y'all were bringing forth to us that either came from Georgia State or other cities where y'all had saw they had redeveloped and revitalized certain, certain properties that look like this. Do y'all have that? Is that present? Have you seen it? Where is it?
I have not, because I was not here in September, but I'm happy to do some research and see if I can find anything.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the, um, the Forty Oaks Committee. Excuse me, I'm forgetting y'all name. Uh,
Friends of Forty Oaks.
Friends of Forty Oaks, yeah. Do y'all have that?
Hi, sure. Um, we're a, a volunteer nonprofit. We definitely have, uh, continued to communicate with the city, which has gone through several different administrative changes, as you know. Uh, we have continued to advocate for CLG designation, which is actually a very common designation. Uh, it's, it's, most communities and counties and cities around us with any sort of historical certificates have a CLG designation, and they do because it opens themselves up to opportunities for grant funding for historical properties. Um, I am a volunteer for a nonprofit, and I have, you know, I'm asking you, the city, to follow through with a CLG designation that has been requested by our own city's Historic Preservation Commission, by our group. Uh, we, we, as a, as a small volunteer nonprofit, we don't necessarily have the resources or the expertise to provide a plan that involves financials, architectural plans, engineering plans. So, you know, our, what we try to do is advocate to preserve and conserve the parks and the green space that we have available to us, and then to work with the city to try to make that conservation happen. Um, so I, I can certainly continue in that capacity, but as far as coming up with an actual financial plan, an architectural plan, I, I think we've done a lot of that. We, we did, Georgia State presented to us as a city, and they, they presented to us a plan, uh, for a historic, um, registration. They validated it. They said, here's the important parts of the building, right? And our HPC is here, they can speak to this as well. Um, but I personally am involved in an advocate group for the park, and, uh, we, we just really want the city to follow through with a CLG designation so the HPC can do work.
Ma'am.
Okay, yes.
So I understand that. And I also understand what a CLG is, and we can have that without a particular project. But the item before me is around the structure of Forty Oaks. And so in that meeting on September 24th, there was a request by several of my colleagues here, despite the administrative shifts and changes that were made, in regards to just something that gives us an end roll to where are we going and if it's the best use of taxpayer dollars to move on this. And so there were people in that meeting that are part of your volunteer nonprofit, because they, they said they had nonprofit designation for Friends of Forty Oaks. And what I'm, only thing I'm asking is to help me make the best decisive and intentional decision. And I asked in that meeting, I said, is that possible?
What meeting are we talking about again? I'm sorry.
September 24th.
From last year.
224.
Last year. Yes. And you're asking?
I asked for, we all asked for components of a plan, and we were advised that we would get that plan to help us make a decision, because these are going to have to be allocated dollars in the budget. But, but we don't know what we don't know, right? Y'all talked to Georgia State. It was advised in that meeting that yes, we can proceed forward with that plan. And so I understand the, the CLG, that's fine. That's something that we can do as a city, whether this project or just historically preserve the district.
Yeah. As, if you're asking as a group what Friends of Forty Oaks has done, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes. We have pleaded with the city to follow through with the CLG designation. I, I don't, I'm not sure what else to provide the city with. I'm sorry, I just, you know, we're out here, we're working, but we're not, um, we're not architects. I, I don't
So, so let me make sure. And, and we have a meeting, and so I only wanted you to speak because we have the motion to defer this, right?
Okay.
The thing is, is that last year, there was a request from those who wanted to preserve the building and not go through the demolition. As part of that, the plan, plan being, for example, timeline to say, from this time to this time, we're going to work on the certification.
Yes.
Once we get the certification, or as in tandem, we are looking at grants that potentially we could utilize for Forty Oaks or whatever within that designation. I think that's what from, uh, an expectation
Sure.
From working not only with the Friends of Forty Oaks, but also with the Historic Preservation. If that meant that as part of that timeline, where you identify particular grants that once you achieve the certification status that you were going to work towards to get, if you needed additional things to do within it, that would help us as a council to understand, should we move forward with continuing to do anything with the structure? Should we look at considering just go ahead and demolishing it?
Sure.
Or where were we? But I think collectively between the two groups, what would have helped are, and then you can still do that, because that's, we have a motion on here to defer this. But to have an understanding of what the timeline is, what needs to happen from point A to point B, what is the expectation in terms of grants that would be utilized to do anything that you're talking about doing, and then what is required, right? And so that's from being needing a timeline, that's something that I would need to see. But I want to make sure we don't get too in the weeds. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. And I'm, I apologize for not having a detailed plan. I wasn't, uh, I was not really expecting this meeting. I appreciate the city has, uh, exploring encapsulation. I was not aware of it, and I, I was under, I was under the thought that the HPC was seeking a CLG designation, and I personally, in my group, has been focused on the preserve and the nature preserve and have not, we really were wait, basically kind of waiting on that. So I'm sorry for not having, um, a more of a future plan, because I felt like, you know, we're kind of hamstringing until we get the designation. So that is why, it's kind of hard to see past it.
Mm-hmm.
I think for, you know, and I guess I'm being personal now, it's hard to see past it because we've been seeking the designation for so long, and I know we need it so badly. And it's not just for Friends of Forty Oaks, right?
Right.
This is a designation that many counties and many municipalities have
Mm-hmm.
So that in order to seek historical grants from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. It's not specific to Forty Oaks. Um, but i- if the council's pleasure is to see more specific plans on what our wish list might be, then I would definitely be very pleased to present that to you. And I apologize if I was short sighted on that.
Okay. And I think while you are waiting to work on that designation, as you mentioned from a state level, if you could identify those grants that would be best utilized for that structure than we can, but I want to make sure we have this deferred, so that gives you an opportunity if we need to bring additional comments about that. So, um, is any further discussion on this?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, my question is for all of you, um, Historic Preservation, Friends of Forty Oaks, and Michael Duncan. I, I think what we're trying to get at here, you don't need an outline, timeline, guideline. We need to know what is the plan for the building even with the designation. That's the plan. That's what we need.
I, I think that
And does it line up with your, your vision of that building?
I, I mean, I can tell you from our group and our volunteers and the community that we've spoken to, is that I think they, they feel like that the building has historical significance, but I think we all agree that it needs to have some use for the community. And, you know, it can't just be a, we, we don't want it to be just a, a monument. It needs to be useful. And we, we feel like because it sits on a nature preserve, that the use for it, that would be the least disruptive to nature, because it's a nature preserve, would be to restore the historic parts of it and, but actually use the building, use the trails, make it an educational center, make it a nature center, signage, programming. We, you know, those are all the things we have talked about. So, you know, i- if I, if I was remiss for not leading with that, yeah, that's the headline. You know, let's use it. Let's make it a nature center. Let's make it a nature preserve. Let's make it a history center. Uh, you know, it can be all those things. Um, and, and we all, we, we want everyone to be able to use it, right?
Okay.
And preserve it.
And Mr. Duncan, does that line up with the, the, what you foresee that property doing for the city?
Yes. So in the Parks Master Plan, the consulting group is looking at ways to conserve the house. And exactly how, um, Lisa has stated, for programs, and then we also have the agriculture plan that we were also looking to utilize the house through that as well. So the consultant, um, when we talked a couple of weeks ago, um, was also looking into some grant opportunities as well, to see if, um, if some exists for us to try to fix up the house as well. So it is, um, a discussion that's within the Parks Master Plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my last question is for, um, HPC, I guess, the Historic Preservation Commission. You guys have work to do. You said that could take up to six months with proper funding. What do we need to do to this house to, well, I, I, I get a, I talked to the Historic Preservation. They say that we, we need to demo the parts that are not going to be deemed historical. And then after that is done, encapsulate. So was that ever talked about or discussed before we got the quote for encapsulation? Nobody talked about demoing the parts that would not be historic? Because we could do it if, if, if the same monies are going to be used for the same intent. We could do the demo, partial demo and encapsulation, depending on the cost, right? Because it doesn't make sense to, to encapsulate something that's not going to, it's going to fall apart anyway.
Right.
Right. Well, the, the original proposal to the council, that the council voted to do was to mothball the building, which means to protect it from the elements, uh, keep the water out. Um, at that time, the administration of the city decided to do it in-house. Um, we've had the Sizemore consultants first, then we had New South come out and evaluate the building.
Has it been mothballed?
And you've read those reports, right? And so, um, mothballing is a temporary process. Considering that the porch is collapsed and rotting, it, it doesn't make sense to me as a building specialist to encapsulate that as part of that building. Um, I'd like to see the demolition of the front porch. The roof in the kitchen, which is another non-historical addition to the building, uh, has collapsed, and to encapsulate that could present problems. The interior of the building, the rest of it is dry, structurally sound from everything that we've done with Georgia State. They've gone in and pulled things off the wall to see what the inside looks like. They've gone, uh, and evaluated underneath the house. They've gone up in the attic. They've gone through the whole thing. Um, so the historic part, the, the H, uh, style construction of the original house is very solid, very much intact. There may be a few areas that we didn't see in our evaluation. Um, but ideally, that would be great to be able to do the demolition and then mothball it until you get down the road to protect the integrity of the entire building. I'm not saying that encapsulating at this time will create problems. Um, if we do it, I'd like to do it after it's been dry for several days so we don't have a rain and then go in the next day and close it up. Um, I would like to be consulted on any future business in this. Just even if I'm a council member, I'd like to be involved with whatever the plan is going to be, because I do know buildings. And, um, and this is the second time that something's come up with this that I was not consulted about. The demolition, we were in shock. We didn't realize that the council was even considering doing the demolition. I didn't go to the retreat. I didn't see the agenda item. And as well, this item, um, we have discussed this in, in the meetings, and, um, everybody's entitled to come to the meeting. It's a public meeting. Um, I am a volunteer. I don't get paid for any of this work or any of this involvement in the city. Um, when I was councilman before, I got $3,500 a year to be a councilman, plus, uh, training. So the, uh, the situation with it, it's going to take time. We do have some hurdles we have to, uh, jump through, hoops we need to balance, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we can keep this house intact. Um, we've discussed going back to the mothballing idea, and that's where this encapsulation came up. Um, it wasn't presented directly to me, but yes, we've been discussing this, uh, all along.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, my last person is Mr. Kaiser.
Okay. Last, and then the
I, I gotta get this out because we're addressing the same issue repeatedly.
Okay.
It's almost 365 days ago.
It's past that. Okay. Mr. Kaiser.
So, Mr. Kaiser. Um, we've, um, we've gotten a quote for demo, and we have a quote on the table for encapsulation. How long does it take you to get a partial demo quote? And then will we still get? And then will we still be honored, that same quote for encapsulation?
So the idea of partial removal on the surface sounds really good. The issue is when you begin to take apart part of the house, then you have to secure the piece that you take off and protect the good part. You have to go in there and determine what's good and what's bad. I think we have a good idea most right at this point, what's good and what's bad. But you have to still protect what you take away. We take away the roof structure, the siding, the flooring, all of that off of two-thirds of the house, right? Which we're talking about, two-thirds. You have to protect what you remove. This requires a structural engineer as well as an architect. So if the idea is to preserve the one-third of the house, then you're spending money that may be removed two years from now, three years from now, five years from now, when a grant is obtained. So it's not as easy as just removal of part of the house. So the idea was to mothball it, as Mr. Moore said. And you can mothball the entire house. The materials that I presented are quality FEMA-approved materials. At least three years, be preserved with the contractor coming in and maintain it as necessary. That's all part of the schedule. And so my recommendate... That's the process.
Okay. Now, I'm going to let Councilwoman Hood. But you asked three, four questions. So I'm going to let... I do shut her down. So next.
Thank you. Yes. I don't think we're going to solve all of these issues tonight. There is a motion to defer this. And I would like us to go ahead and call the question.
Okay.
And then all of the people involved in this can get together and come as close as they can to an agreement that you would present to us at the following meeting.
All right. I have ready for the question on that one. All those in favor of deferring item to a resolution authorizing an emergency contract for the Forty Oaks Structure Encapsulation Project to be funded through SPOS II to the November work session, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone oppose? Motion passed. I would like to have a motion for executive session. So with the executive session, we disappear. And you can stay here and see how long we're going to stay out there. But it's a Thursday night, and I know you have things you would like to do. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I move it.
Go ahead. She'll second.
I move that we move into executive session to discuss personnel matter.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we move into executive session to discuss the personnel matter. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.